Call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Now, this meeting has been recorded and will be placed on YouTube. Because this is a workshop type of session, we haven't provided separately for public comment. However, there'll be plenty of opportunity to review the budget again at the February 13th City Council meeting and also at a couple eighty period. And with that being said, we'll call please and state your name. Marian, you want to start?
Mary Ann Wayne.
Thank you all.
Dan Wester, Mike here, Tom during.
Thank you. Moving down to item number four, I'm going to turn the floor over to Cynthia to walk us through her budget worksheets. So feel free to stop me and give input or ask questions. The first thing I'm going to do is just refer to these again, we talked briefly about them last week. This is the actual tax certification page from the state budget form. You can see we had taxable growth of twenty-two point six two and they're allowing us to capture nineteen point oh five percent of the growth. The dollar limit over there in the left-hand side, that's seven point eighty-six four oh eight, that's the combined general fund levy that they're letting us do with that rollback thing. So if we want to stay at eight ten, I calculated the amount needed and put it on the insurance line thirty-six thousand seven thirty-seven. And then the ag is just the set three dollars and almost point oh oh three seven five. And then if you look at the bottom then left or right corner, you can see the levy would be an eight-ten in the amount of property tax generated. And that is on the bottom, I have handwritten that's two hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-five more in general fund property taxes than the current year, but the levy would stay the same. Okay, can you just speak briefly about any possible impacts of breaking out the insurance as a separate levy? Are there any for the council benefit and department head benefit?
No, the insurance levy you can levy for the insurance costs and the general fund and road use. Of course, our actual expenses are much higher than that. I just picked that amount to take us to the eight-ten. So it gets reseeded right into the general fund and you just have to show that you paid that much or more in those insurance types of costs.
It doesn't have any direct impact to property tax?
Well, I mean.
The owners, other than the final result?
Yeah, the levy difference. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. And then the second page that's sitting there also from the budget software. This is what our notice of hearing will look like for that special hearing now that we have to have on this tax statement. It seemed really strange to me when it generated and it shows percentage of change negative fifteen thirty-five. So I called and talked to Ted at the Department of Management who's in charge of the software. And he said, the reason that they exactly match is that the law was written to take the first show, show them what happened to the first hundred thousand dollars of taxable valuation, okay? So since commercial property now has that caveat that the first hundred and fifty thousand is taxed just like residential, so they're always going to match. And I asked him, I said, well, we're keeping the levy the same. Our value went up, but the city levy is exactly the same. Why would it show a negative fifteen thirty-five? And he said, it's because of the rollback. And so we don't even control that. So to me, this is confusing to residents. To me, if I was a resident, I'd get this and say, oh, well, the city is lowering my property taxes by fifteen point thirty-five percent or not. If their assessment went up, we're actually, their bill's going to go up. Our levy stays the same, but that doesn't give them that information anywhere out there, but I didn't write the law or the form.
Is it the full page add in the backs, isn't it? Or is there room for notation in there?
There's room for notation on it.
So we put in big caps. Despite the computational number here, your levy rate is not changing. And if your house says upwards, that property tax will go up, not down.
Right.
Fifteen percent.
Right. Yeah, I just.
Because I would see that was, I was looking at this replay and I saw the same thing, one plus. That's a first A, a huge jump, negative more positive and B, not accurate.
Right.
So, okay.
Yeah, but I verified with him and it's filled out correctly. The only thing that's going to change that last line, it says that probably above notice is also available online, but that was supposed to be removed because there was no way for us to put our website in there. You can see the website's at the top on the left, so that will change, but that will be the only thing unless you change the levy. But if we keep where we're at, is everybody comfortable with this, how we did that? Any questions? All right. So let's just dig right into the fun. So the first page, that general fund levy, it just kind of brings those numbers here and I've just highlighted that we added the insurance cost line. Again, we had twenty-two point six two percent growth in taxable valuations. I actually did a computation today for some, for Tom, our hundred percent valuation went up twenty-four point six, maybe something like that. It actually went up higher than that. Okay. So licenses and permits. I have them filled in except the building permits. I did not fill that in. You know, we took in sixty-one thousand last fiscal year. We've only taken in twelve-five this year. Do you want me to just double it or do you want me to go on the actual? Anybody has a crystal ball to know what buildings are going to do? You know, my guess is part of that sixty-one thousand is commercial permits that are a lot more expensive.
Does that include Traveros projects then?
I would think theirs was the fiscal year before, but the building behind that they're building, I think that would have been last fiscal year. So, you know, are we going to have more of those? I don't know.
I already think to keep it the same, that's kind of silly. Interest rates being so high, residential especially, but I don't see that we need as much right now.
I was going to ask Chris today, but he wasn't in today, so.
Does it normally mirror like the first six months and the second six months are about the same?
Yeah, I would, I would think most of the time.
So it looks like we should probably take that back down because unless we get something out in the commercial area.
And we could always do, we can always take in more money, you know. So do you want me to put like twenty-five thousand there?
I was thinking like half forty in case there is either commercial or additional.
Okay, I'll put forty thousand there. Now, do you want me to read the lines I filled into the three hundred for right away dog park IPs? Joe came up with that estimate. A hundred and fifty, that's two cigarette permits or seventy-five each miscellaneous, that's mostly golf cart permits. And sign, and that does not come in the same for the first half of the fiscal year. Most people get them in the spring. And then sign permits and peddler permits. So that would make that license and permits total forty-five thousand instead of just five thousand. And of course, you will get updated once for your February use of money as interest.
Cynthia, it's good.
Yep, a second. Under sign permits, they don't show anything on the as of now. Chris isn't available this evening, but so like the music one-five-one, their signs, their permits weren't in here.
I'd have to bring up a history.
Oh, he's got a sign, does he? It's a vinyl that he.
Yeah, he didn't have to pay for what's on the doors.
But the other side did, yeah. I don't know when he, when it was, yeah, when it was, if it was in June.
Same with Novox.
Yes, I would think Novox would have been before the, the beginning of this fiscal year. I can research that and it's also, it's also possible that when they came in, they got booked into building permits instead of sign permits. We've had that happen a couple of times. Oh, I'll research that. Other questions about licenses and permits? Okay, interest, you can see part of them, the estimates came from Joe or Kathy at the library board. The other ones, I just kind of looked at the half here and we have some bigger interest that we've gotten in the CDs and I hope to get some more money in CDs and then some into IP. I need to have a moment to do that. So the increase in projected use of money is, is a really good thing. Rates are higher. We're getting more just even on our checking account. Any questions on those amounts? Page two, federal government. We've gotten a FEMA grant, that's deratio money still coming in, but I don't expect that to. We've gotten all that we're going to get, so I'm not aware of any FEMA grant that we're up for. State of Iowa, same thing. Shared revenues, liquor license sharing, a thousand. Fuel tax refund, that comes in just once a year, so that's why the as of December is already the three thousand because we already got it for this year. Business property tax reimbursement, that's a new, that hundred and fifty that the state is converting to residential rate. They have, I forget how many million it is, to allocate to cities to try to fill in that gap and that's what that money is for. What?
For now.
Yeah, for now. And we asked, since the rollback went down, we asked Deanna in from Duett and I asked Ted, well, then is the amount that we're going to get going to go up? And he goes, well, you know, they've capped the total amount that's going to be paid, so if everybody asks for more, you're probably not going to go clear up to where you should be already and it's just the second year. So, so that's why I just double put the half payment that we got this year. And that commercial industrial state replacement, that's been in place for quite a while. They are phasing it out and the last year that we get it will be fiscal twenty-six, so this is the calculated amount. Local grants and reimbursements, the city of Walford, they gave me that amount. The Clinton Township and Fairfax Township have not figured out their, their amounts yet, so those are just estimates. The city of Paylow, again, it kind of depends on how much building's going on, how much time Chris is spending. I did calculate what their revised hourly rate would be based on Chris's new payroll and our insurance renewal. And that'll be on your February agenda to change the rate from fifty-one an hour to fifty-three fifty. Library support. I think those are accurate. Walker, let me know, it's staying the same. I'm sure Township's staying the same and those all came from the library board. That's intergovernmental, page three. These are charges for revenues, so those first lines with amounts are from the library board and then there's sales tax collected for, we collected on the park registration fees. Does anybody use this one on the screen or do I? I don't know. No? Okay, good. I'm not going to advance it. And then the rezoning or variance, those are small items. And then the miscellaneous, we start with fire department donations. And those go in to their savings account and then we have a line in their expenses that they could spend out of their savings account. You can see that that first line, the actual for twenty-three, they got a really large bequeath, but you know, you can't count on that. So we just always kind of go with these numbers and then if it comes in bigger, that's great.
Didn't you say like you counseling together, like the donations are coming in a lot slower than in previous years?
That's fireworks, the most important part of a fire department. Especially the tag in.
That's just the fireworks donations.
Okay.
That were down. So it's nothing that's a two or nothing?
No.
It is connected.
Well, it is, but.
You guys don't be asking, don't be answering budget question.
We don't.
You can see that.
We don't use budget money for fires.
Yes.
Only.
You can only, right, you don't use tax money, but it's all budget money.
Tax.
You can see that the actual was thirteen-three for fireworks, so the twelve, I mean, we're still, I think, within the realistic. But that doesn't come in the same rate all year. It's, you know, the rush at the end is right before the fireworks. Street participation, I just put twenty-five thousand in there. I'm not sure, you know, when Heartland Heights develops another addition, then when they sell a lot, they have a street participation fee. The reason that that ninety-four thousand is big, one, they, they paid a whole bunch at the end of a fiscal year or calendar year for their tax benefit. And then I think it probably has some money from Traverro also in there. Okay, page four, miscellaneous continued, there's library donations and park donations. Those were taken from their budget requests. And then the general staff gives us a cable franchise revenue. It's not guaranteed, but it's been consistent ever since I've been here. It's based on their profit. The banner program, if we continue that. Cynthia, can I interrupt just a second? Why don't you go back up to parks grants? I'd see we had in the budget twenty thousand. And then we're moving forward twenty thousand? I guess Joe would have to answer that. Are you projecting that we're going to get a grant?
Well, we put that in every year. And then if we get the grants, if there's grants out there available for, so we get them, then we get them. But it's kind of a, I guess, a hope that that's what we get. We work towards it, but we don't always get grants.
And I can tell you that the last big grant that the parks got is that seventy-five thousand and which, yeah. We're hoping to get that before the end of this fiscal year, so it's not a quick process most of the time. It's like the deratio man. General, any other questions, Sean? No. Okay, Janet, cable franchise revenue, I just talked about that banner program reimbursements, refunds. That's, doesn't usually happen, but we always put something in there. Insurance claims. Oh, no, sorry, that's blank. Welcome packet, put four thousand in, that comes in mostly before the end of December because that's when she starts the calendar year. And then miscellaneous and newsletter ads, that comes in pretty consistent year round, so that's why it's kind of doubled that the half year. Too bad, you have another question. If you go back up to banners.
Uh huh.
Programs. So our current banner program is for firefighters.
Yep.
Correct?
Yep.
Okay, are we getting any activity in that one?
Yep.
Okay.
We have spot for thirty-three and we did not fill that with the heroes and I'm sure we won't, probably won't fill it with the.
So is that budget projection based off the thirty-three?
It's pretty close. So it's like a hundred and twenty each, so it's a little less than thirty-three, yeah. But whatever comes in, we don't buy a banner unless we have the revenue, so that expense line is directly tied to that revenue.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on page four? So the, so page one, because we're starting special revenues now. Road use tax, I have an estimate of four-ten-oh-sixty. That's kind of just doubling our half year. We have tended to take in more than the league's estimate. That's about, what I'm estimating is a hundred and forty-five per capita. The league's estimate's one thirty-three. But we've always ran over their estimate, which is good. Local action sales tax, that's in place till twenty thirty-four. And they used to give us a six or eight month estimate out, but they don't do that. They just do it based on actual sale now. Oh, that little formula down there is wrong. I picked up the road use amount. I will update that. So again, it's just kind of based on half year. And then the interest. And then the TIP revenues, we have to certify what we're taking in already last fall, so that's already set. And it ties into our debt service page that we'll see at the end and then interest. And then the Lynn County ARPA grant, I don't, we're going to use that for construction of the well, so I don't know if we're actually going to start construction and have expenses for their money before June. So that's why I just brought forward the balance. We already submitted fifteen forty-nine just so that we could secure that, yes, we're doing it and we got this and I let them know now we're not going to do any more draw so construction, so that would be the balance. Okay. Then page two doesn't have anything filled in. This is where, based on your discussion about the CIP, we would decide whether we're going to do long-term debt. And then once all the other numbers are filled in, that's when I'll figure out what the transfers in are and that they will go on this page and you'll have that information by February. Okay, that's the end of the revenues. Any questions? Okay, so let's start in the expenses. Public safety is the first program. Law enforcement, we got a letter from Lynn County that they're raising the rate two dollars an hour this year rather than one dollar. So it's going up to forty-two. If you keep it eighteen hours a week like you have now, then that would be the thirty-nine three twelve. Any thoughts on changing that number of hours? Okay. Fire department over on the side there in the notes, you can see that, that city of Fairfax amount the one fifty-five seven twenty, that's a dollar per thousand. And then the city of Walford, and they're doing a dollar forty-three for five years to help with the debt. And then the Fairfax Township and Clinton Township estimates. And then if you remember, due to the increase in workers' comp, we usually do thirty thousand from the local option sales tax, but I took it to sixty and that would be paid on the debt to help out their budget total. And making their total five seventy-one three fifty-seven. And so what we do is I, I start with that total and then I subtract their, their debt and the do an estimate for the lines and then if I have any left, I throw the difference on the equipment line. Spanky, you want to give any input on fire department?
Anybody have any questions for?
Oh, a question for Cynthia. Back on the little option sales tax money. The logic behind doubling it was based off a worker's comp insurance increase, you said?
Yeah, explain that a little bit, please. So when we raised their payroll, kind of a unexpected consequences is the workers' comp insurance went really high. And this fiscal year, they actually had to pay two years of the increase because workers' comp is kind of always a year behind. They give you an estimate in your renewal, then they do an audit April through March and then they give you a bill for that previous year based on actuals and then they give you another bill on a revised estimate on the current year. And so, yeah, it went up a lot.
So on that, the workman's comp insurance for firefighting and police is like three times as much as it is for a regular person. Like you would pay three dollars and fifty cents for a mechanic for workman's comp for your numbers. It's fifteen sixty-seven or something like that for firefighting.
So that's going to be my next question, as we increase payroll month or staff, we don't see that dramatic of an increase or?
Yeah.
And it's because of what it's for.
Because it's high risk.
I just learned that and actually Charlie just learned that too. Because he called me and said, you need to.
Sit down?
Lie. But that's why we were shocked that it went up as much as it did.
Okay, thank you.
But that's the reason for me. Then everything else is obviously just what we do for training, equipment replacement, updated equipment. Like right now, we're looking at stuff for fighting fires for electric vehicles. And that's all going sky high, so it's kind of one thing. It's something new constantly. You know, like how are we placing tires on trucks and we're buying new bunker gear and it doesn't matter if your helmet was in a fire once or if it was in a fire a hundred times. When it's ten years old, you have to throw it away and get a new one. So there's a lot of rules and regulations that they put on you that you have to replace all your personal protective equipment. And now they're putting a ten-year tag on it instead of it just being when you get a hole burned in it or it breaks or, you know, something like that. Now it's, everything is ten-year, seven to ten-year shelf life. It's just ridiculous.
And a hundred and seventy thousand of that five seventy-one is coming out of their savings, so we've got a line item just that they could, if they come up with a big purchase, they could spend a hundred and fifty-five thousand out of their regular savings and that's all donated money. And then fifteen out of fireworks.
And that's what we bought. So side by side that we used over in Atkins, we actually, that was out of our savings account. That wasn't out of our regular budget of money. That was actually donated money that we used to purchase that. Are we going to look at any high-dollar equipment purchases for G vehicles? Yeah. Well, we'll be able to cover it on budget. We won't have to ask for more money to do it. Everything should be like, we're looking at about maybe spending what, three, four grand here coming up on certain things for electric vehicles, but it's stuff that we can absorb in our budget. It's nothing that we have to, you know, it's not like buying a truck.
I can't remember the gallon amount, but I think they just dumped like fifteen thousand gallons of water on a EV and it started burning.
Oh, yeah. That's pretty much somewhere along the three.
Yeah, and that's where I didn't know if they were coming out with.
We're kind of doing, we have some equipment for battery fires, but like for your computers and your cell phones that you can put in a container and then we have this, it's like floor drying, only it's not. It smothers it and you put a can on it and you just leave it set for a year and it goes out. But on the cars, we kind of have a theory that if it happens on highway. But on the cars, we kind of have a theory that if it happens on highway, these blankets are anywhere from one thousand to five thousand dollars. You can throw a cover over it to smother. And then we figured we would just get the cheaper ones, throw it over it and just push it off into the DOT right away and then say, here's your car and then because they start back on fire, we can put them on a wrecker. And then they burn the wrecker. Wrecks, I heard won't even fall.
Uh, we stopped moving our E Vs for week even effectively this week, so. And because of fire hazards.
It's terrible.
An E V, shame on you, by the way.
Don't want to catch on fire, man.
Nope, you have an aspect ever.
And and you know, it's just one of those things that, yeah, we're preparing, so we will have to raise our budget to.
That's, I know they're trying to find methodology to put out a few fires and it's not going great, so.
No, they're having part-time. But, so that's kind of the, sums up my whole thing. We're continuing to do a little bit of building maintenance. We just upgraded the electrical system for the generator and we're gonna get a couple of the poles taken down. We did some underground work, so it's all underground now instead of above and so just, I don't wanna spend ten million dollars on a new fire station. I just say where I'm at and you go to walk in.
I mean, we're one up on the library. Our roof doesn't leak.
Well, I'm on spot. But you know, uh, so that's pretty much, everything is just trying to stay updated on the new stuff, update the old stuff. It's crazy what, and we're gonna have to be doing air packs here in about another two or three years. I'm sure that's gonna be two hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, so.
Well, and what's the timing of a new big truck?
Uh, we're still getting, they're working on getting the estimates. It, that will probably be in the next, I would say twenty-five. So when we get the other one paid off.
Twenty-five years?
Twenty-five, twenty twenty-five.
That's what this budget is?
No, after that. It'd be the twenty-six year.
Okay.
It won't be this year. It'll be twenty-five, twenty-six, not twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay.
But I will give you updates on that on when we, we still don't have any pricing. The guys are trying to figure out what they want, what we need. I shouldn't say what they want, what we need, not what they want. And then we'll get some numbers here. I'm still thinking it's gonna be a couple of months before we even get any. The truck building is sky high and it was, takes a long time. By the time we would say, yes, we wanna get one and order it, it's probably gonna take a year and I have to get it, I'm guessing. Unless you can get a demo that they have some shelf that meets your needs.
Or you're doing custom, it's four years.
Yeah, I mean, you get a custom build, it's four years. It's crazy.
Any other questions about the fire department? Okay, um, building department, um, and you'll notice this in a lot of the departments. I did not get my payroll estimates done. Um, so uh, those will be updated from February and I'll give you a separate sheet that shows all the different lines and um, I have a spreadsheet that I put so that I can see what like percentage, of course, all of Chris's building department, but like in parks. But percentage Lynn worked in parks sort of or versus Brandon versus Brian and and allocate it that way, but I'm sorry, yeah, I didn't get it done. Um, I don't think there's anything. Um, the Bellin property, we doubled that five thousand. That's for that seeding in the conservation easement. But I think everything else is, um, the legal is a guess. Uh, I kind of went on the last year's actual. I mean, we've had a good year so far, should find some wood to knock on, but um, you know, if you get into a bunch of um, nuisance and they take you to court, then you have expenses really bad. Um, any questions from the building department? Okay. On page three of public safety. Didn't work well. Um, animal control, um, I took it up to two thousand um, based on nine thirty for the half year. And I know, uh, Lynn, you wanna talk about new siren for Hartland Heights at all? Timing?
Nothing new there. I tried to get one going, but there was more need in other areas with E M As, so. At this time, there's no talk of anything else. Their layout's for a bad, but the only because there's one up on Eightieth Street from ten to thirty, is that right? So it's kind of the closest one to Hartland one, so they're saying it's fine for now.
You have one of a Longview there?
What's that?
One of a Longview here, right? On the hill?
On Longview?
Yeah, is there one up on the hill there?
No, no. Nothing up there.
That's just where you go storm watch?
Yeah, yeah, we go sit up there, but yeah, I was trying to get the new one, the wrong new part, but it didn't work because of the grant stuff that had, we were convinced, so the other toss was starting to get it on the north ends to follow the perfectly it's rolling through this, but.
And so you don't, you don't see it working out as far as grants or it's just not needed?
It's not, because they control our sirens. They can go on and take care of everything else, so there's nothing new that they're adding.
So we couldn't add it if we wanted to?
Yeah, well, I think that's.
Okay. Right.
Since we did, it would probably be between forty-five plus.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. But, so I was asking, is it needed? Do we feel it's needed and do we wanna pursue it even if there's not a grant, sort of?
I always think there's need for it, but it's earlier, the council decision, but. Other than going up the Eightieth Street and the thirty, you know, tower, another one where you got the tower. One with the tower, one way, so down, down, go for it.
That's it.
Can you hear those sirens up in the new development?
Depends on the weather.
So that would be my question is, we don't need to put one up if you can hear them, okay? Be my thing, right?
Yeah, if it's a big wind event, they're rates, they're here also. Not made to you, but if there's a big wind event, email you. Or it's like, it's just, I can hear my words. Like when the Rachel came through, you're in for a short time out. Really depends on the weather.
So anyway, that, you might keep that in mind. If you think that's a need, it certainly might be something that local option sales tax could fund.
And if you ever want to use it to have, it was only covered, you have.
So we were right up, we have to maintain it.
Apparently, we purchased the ones we have. So with the, the deal with the E M A is we let them pretty much have them. Now they maintain them, they take care of them, they check them, they set them off, they do everything by, which is more than what we could. So if the better maintenance deal, they have them do that. And every time they do a test, they do a program check on everything. So it's a nice deal, so they know something's wrong before anybody. So in the past, when we did it, we went down to a fire station, hit it up and turn it on. Yeah, I hear it, it's working. That's all you need. So, maintenance side is a good deal. Look at them, great name. We just don't have the control. We don't, we don't set them off. We can request to set off if we have a real need. So you just get on the radio, tell dispatch, E M A, they'll set them on. Why we're setting, why we own set up and they will set them up for a request, but if that's why they set them off, they take all the public status whether they're set off or if they're not set off. All calls, they're the them. Instead of us. So so it takes some liability off the fire department, which is.
Of course, yeah.
Okay. Um, next uh, program is public works. And uh, we start with the general fund and the lost fund. So very little of public works come out of, comes out of the general fund. We do do one-fourth of the skid loader lease um, out of general road use, water and sewer. And um, the new dump truck, right, that they have ordered. Okay, so in this current year, we said the general fund would do twenty-five, uh, the lost would do a hundred um, water in sewer and road use would do twenty-five, I think. And then in the new year, in the new budget, we're doubling that. So the fifty thousand, the two hundred thousand, the fifty 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 that should pay for. Right?
Yeah, that's a layer of memory. That's two or three different things.
Yeah, yeah. So that's why that changed from twenty-five to fifty. That's why we haven't written it yet, because we don't have a truck yet, but that is hopefully then fully funding it in the, across the different funds. And then the local option sales tax, several years ago, we started um, paying for part of the seal coating out of lost and it's really helped our road use fund stay positive. Um, so Lynn suggested putting sixty thousand in there. And then there's the lost contribution to the truck. And then staying in the next page, staying in public works, but now we're going to the road use fund. Uh, again, salaries, I need to do my spreadsheet and fill that in. Um, these other numbers came from Lynn. Um, you can see there's a line for ash tree, ten thousand, um, the thirty-one thousand per um, contractor work, twenty-five thousand beach, um, contributing to that chip and seal in addition to the local option sales tax sixty. And then six thousand for sweeping. And then you see um, the road use portion of the skid loader lease.
Is that thirty-nine fifty and put it all up here, we used this last week or two, from cloud?
This, no, this would be uh, what's paid through December thirty-third, so no. And then we added a new line of paint striping. Depending on, the next page is still road use. Think, nothing surprising, but if you have questions. Um, street repairs is a different line from the chip and seal. Lynn, you wanna talk about that?
Street repairs is past. They kind of did, um, more of the crack, cracked seal was the biggest thing we did last year. Oh, thirteen thousand, I think we spent on that. And then if you remember to, this, that would only, we only did a portion of it. We only gave a portion of the town. So we're just gonna continue some of that. It also goes to if we need to take out a chunk of the street and repair it. Uh, and that nice thing. Uh, that's true, so we're, uh, it's the branding. We made sure to do the uh, street jobs. To, you know, tracks, but.
And then you'll see the fifty thousand from road use fund for the truck. And then the van to build the, build the street, that, we'll be discussing that at um, C I P list discussion. The Beverly Road Overlay is done, right? Yeah, that's done. Um, and then road use admin, I charge seventeen percent of my salary in road use. And so that will be built in and calculated. Um, and then here's uh, where if we, uh, Joanne and I would like to be able to calculate what we think the admin position would be. And then plug that in to the budget. One-fourth out of general, one-fourth out of road use, one-fourth out of water, one-fourth out of sewer. And see how it works. Um, if, you know, our numbers don't gel, we can either change the percentages or take it out. But if it works for the budget, we can leave it in now for the budget. And then let's say in April, we said, okay, now we need to discuss this administrative position. And you decide not to do it, or maybe you hire a consultant, you don't find any qualified candidates. It's okay that it's in the budget. I mean, we, one, we can amend the budget, but just because it's in there in as an expense, doesn't mean you have to spend it. It's just, we would like to see the numbers in there, the estimates in there to see if it all works in our projected fund balances. And so um, I think to begin with, if we have it in there, we do a fourth of those um, costs out of road use. And it'd be in that admin section with mine.
I'm not sure if I'm a fan of putting something in there. I mean, this is all tentative and discussion, but you put something in, we're going to talk about it once. Like you put something in the budget. I think that's because you're gonna do it, all these lines or stuff that you do regularly, you have to, yeah, you don't have to use it. But it gives a false impression, you know, that this is the direction, but. I'm, I'm really hesitant and um, so far, there's a lot more discussion. I think that needs to happen on that. It's necessary, it's warranted, but can see as we go, I, that's my opinion.
If you, you know, here's how budget mind works. So if you don't put it in the budget, we come down to the end and we're looking at fund balances. And maybe you're going to decide, spend it somewhere else, you know, because those aren't in there. And then the money's gone, and so you're at least another year from even having the possibility. If you put it in there, then if, when you're looking at fund balances, you can decide if you have it um, extra, then it really would be extra if that goes through. If that doesn't go through, then you know, okay. Come April, we've got another hundred fifty thousand dollars that can go towards projects or go towards expenses.
I agree with Tom. I think we could look at other, I mean, I don't know as if we need to budget that amount of money for that position. Like, I'm not opposed to saying maybe budget fifty thousand dollars. And if we need to look at a full-time mayor, or we need to look at adding another clerk position to take up some of those duties. I mean, that's what I'm hearing from some of those people that um, they have more clerks that can do some of those things instead of this type of position. I just don't think we've really looked at it enough to throw a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of payroll at it. I'm not saying that we don't need to do something. I just don't know at this point if that's what that should be.
Or do you feel that a part position would be doing economic development, for example? Going out and talking.
She's saying there's a lot more discussion to be had. And without getting off topic here, she could be like a full-time mayor plus a clerk could cover with theoretically less cost, the city admin position. Yeah. To be honest, I don't have a strong opinion either way. I understand just because you have something in the budget, that's me, you have to spend it.
But I agree with Tom.
Understand. We, we know which way the, yeah, the wind might be blowing when we start doing that, but it's also good to kind of get an idea of where our budget can be going, if we do have that position. But if you wanna find somewhere in the middle where, let's get an idea of what numbers are gonna increase grow in fifty thousand.
I just don't know if we're to a point that we need a full-time person for economic development, or we need a full-time person for grant writing. Or that those are things that E C C O could help us do, or we could have clerks can go to the grants. Like we, you know, um, our previous clerk wrote grants for us.
Well, she has, she and I have.
Yeah, and so, so there's, so I'm just not.
I think to what you said earlier about, maybe not admin, but we know something has to change. You're gonna retire in sometime soon.
Even if I wasn't, something has to change.
Okay.
We're, I mean, we're at that spot, you know?
They're going to be though.
Yeah, I, I am definitely going to be, and so.
A major change in itself. And what's the direction that, well, after a lot of discussion, do, do we all wanna go? And maybe I, I just don't like the word admin, I guess. And I think you said it, well, okay, we know we need to shuffle some stuff, right? I mean, whenever the time comes and who's coming in and what capacity and what their knowledge is, that's there, but I'm just not, Mike, you said it too, we know we need to do something, have something on the line, but, okay, but I don't like. I'm just not, Mike, you said it too, we know we need to do something, have something on the line, but, okay, but I don't like admin because that while it's there and we got changes coming up in the future and it's gonna be navigating through the trees. What term now do we be satisfied with in there? If we're just throwing out a potential number to see how budgeting looks with an additional position.
I mean, what does it take to go from a part-time mayor to a full-time mayor?
You already have a full-time mayor, and it's not cutting it.
Well, I, I could tell you.
You're not paid for as a full-time mayor.
Wouldn't make any difference, even if you paid me five times as much, does that mean I have five times as much time to dedicate it to it? No.
Well, and from the city administrative side of it, I don't think that's a good answer. Because every two years, you can get another person in, and that person could have no knowledge of city government.
I don't think that would.
You know, if you hire a professional with, you know, college and um city experience, it's going to be such a different change than just whoever might get elected every two years. Um, you'll spend two years training a person that doesn't have experience, you know. Um, and I'm not sure if you go to a full-time mayor, if you're not talking change of form of government, you know, I, I, I don't, that, we're not suggesting that. We think this form of government would be fine. But let your mayor be part-time and go to some meetings and, and make contacts and have input, run the meetings, but the day-to-day administration um bigger part of some of the duties that the engineers doing um handled by a professionally trained staff person. We really think that that's the best option for Fairfax, and I mean, we're deep in it every day, you know, knowing how the city's running right now and what our needs are. I mean, that truly is our best recommendation for this, of what we think is best for the city of Fairfax.
Well, Cynthia, if you went to a full-time mayor, aren't you limiting your pool for people that can live in that position?
Yeah. You know, they have to live in town, you know, and sometimes administrators, they may move to town, you know, I mean, there there's so many details yet to work out, you know, do you want to do it? And if you do, then how do we write the ordinance? And it has to be an ordinance and come up in the job descriptions and yeah, and uh, and then, you know, you do a search. So, you know, you might not even, if you decided to go with it, you might not even have somebody hired till the end of twenty-four, the beginning of um twenty-five. But if you don't look, see what it looks like in your budget for those possible expenses, you're gonna start the decision process without that information, but I mean, I'll do what you want to do. I just can't strongly, but state that how strong my recommendation is that we at least see if it works in the budget. And if I put it in there and in February we find out it didn't work, well, then we've learned something. But if we don't try and look at the numbers and we don't know.
So Cynthia, the budget final, as we look at the budget schedule, our final decision would be?
Well, in February, you really have to be kind of set because we have to publish the notice before the March meeting, and you can lower expenses, but you can't raise any expenses at that point, so that's another.
I just really feel like if we put it in here like this, that it's gonna be a done deal.
But it's a council decision.
I just don't feel like it is, just by this conversation, I don't feel like it is. I feel like we're being rushed and pushed into this, and I don't I don't feel like we've really done our due diligence. We haven't really looked into it, and I understand that if it's not budgeted, you can't, but.
Well, the final decision has to be done in February, and I know, you know, there's some hesitation on it. Do you want her to put those numbers in there? Because they can be taken out in February, because in February is the final decision.
Well, what's gonna change between now and February? What knowledge are we gonna get between now and February that's gonna change your mind?
Hiring someone or anything like that. I'm saying to see, because we know there's holes, obviously there's gaps in the budget, as is tonight. And the question is, do we want to, in addition to filling the other wages, put that position or that dollar amount into the budget, and then if we don't like it, we take it out of February.
And, and we're not asking for a decision whether you want to hire that person in February, just if you want to take it out of the budget.
And I understand what Marianne's getting at too, so I, again, I'm.
But I mean, what's gonna change between now and February, meaning, because whatever, we would know whether the dollar amounts were.
Dollar amounts would be.
Because there's really no wages in here, right, for the most part at all.
And if you change your mind, you can't add.
Well, you can do a budget amendment come July.
That's what I would, I would budget amendment.
But then you have your two hundred and thirty a year.
Two.
Right after.
Done three, but.
Right after, in July, to make the plus or minus on what was left over.
And then usually this break.
So, so we could do another one somewhere in the middle if necessary, right, after discussion and to figure out what the right. I just think that this is brought up unfortunately at the wrong time. You know, brought up briefly last month, and I feel like we're under the gun now to, to make a decision, and I don't have near enough remotely enough information to feel comfortable with I, I guess, or no, or a no, either, either way.
But that's, we're not asking for a yes or no.
But if it's in there, then.
I mean, the council's the only people who can pass the ordinance to establish the person, the position or hire somebody. I mean, staff's not gonna do that, but.
So you just call it potential additional staff.
And Cynthia's point is, and, and Tom, you're asking for information, that's kind of what she's asking to do is put in that information. And again, I know both Marianne and Tom's hesitation, and I'm the same way, um of what position or what role we need. Again, I mean, don't, don't feel rushed. I mean, how many times did I say no on the dog part? I still say no on the dog part. That has been built for how long?
Yeah, we're, we're not trying to, to rush you to a decision whether to go with the position or not. And no one is trying to take the decision to add that position away from the council. Absolutely not. But and, and the reason, excuse me, just one more thing, the, you know, the timing. Joanne and I thought it was perfect timing, you know, I, I I'm kind of surprised you say it's bad timing. To us, at budget time is the perfect time to be discussing that, especially in a year that you know your clerk's gonna retire sometime in this year. We thought the timing but couldn't have been more perfect.
The timing is perfect for the numbers, it's decided that we were just kind of.
Yeah.
Some people felt blindsided that we don't want to add this position at the last hour. There's more, so.
Or that that's our only option, that we can't add another clerk, or we can't, you know. I guess I don't, most other cities in the state don't do that, so what do they do? How do they get along?
Every city in the surrounding area has city administrators, so I, this discussion I think is going.
Does and Marion does.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Mount Vernon, Lisbon, Ely.
Yeah.
They all have.
All the ones right here do.
Yeah.
So the last thing I want to mention is whoever in the end is your replacement, what kind of knowledge will that person have? Will it be as much, my guess is highly enough, right? You're well-respected in the state, right? So what knowledge that person doesn't have, and I've heard numerous times from state representatives that come here to, to go over the numbers, you have it now, right? So if we talk about a clerk that that we're gonna have a drop-off, I mean, let's be honest, so who's gonna pick up that drop-off? Is the admin gonna be able to pick up that drop-off? Uh, you know, what is the admin there for, for what a city clerk? The new city clerk, that is my concern. You know these numbers, obviously you've been doing this for a long time, and I respect that, and we all do. That is my concern, is finding someone that can do that job and do it well.
That's also our concern, and that also spurred this idea, because um Swisher?
Yeah.
Swisher, Tanya just retired. And they advertise and they advertise and they advertise, and they had like one, maybe two applicants for clerk position. I mean, it was a part-time clerk position, which limits, you know, some people, but um so it's very possible that the candidates you get will not have any or a lot of experience. And if you, before you come to hire a clerk, if you know that you're gonna go with an admin or not, then you would know, oh, well, if we have this admin, we could probably go with a clerk with less experience, less knowledge. The uh job descriptions before we advertise would probably be shifted a little bit, you know.
The admin or they would be able to pick up the slack on what they don't know, one picks up the slack for the other one.
So if you get a trained admin with a college degree and experience.
Where are we at with? I guess I just assumed when you retired that we would transition the existing clerk like up, you know, the best.
Tina, Stacy, they are not interested, either one of them. I've talked to them.
I mean, so I think we were all in the impression that if you left, that Tina would be moving up into the clerk's position. She wants to stay a deputy clerk.
Well, we'd have to do the same way we did with Kevin, even if we know we have someone you know, that is a trained successor, he's still most likely put out of the job search.
Yeah, but neither one of them left the position.
I, I understand, but I, can we just change it to, to move on?
Yeah, yes.
Change it, change it to a city staff, because I think both with Cynthia's retirement, you know, and in fiscal twenty-eight. And uh, as the city expands, I think, and I don't want to use the term like high level and low level, but I think we're gonna need another person who does the high-level stuff, which is the land handing, the economic development, the getting businesses, more of kind of what a full-time mayor role would be, uh, with some of the more background administrative knowledge, and then there's someone that is making the city function with the bills and dealing with auditors and all of like that boring necessary stuff to keep the city functioning. I think there's two positions there that are gonna be need to fill, and I do kind of lean towards it now as I think about it. At least having an idea budget-wise of what we're gonna need that, because, I mean, we're tired and and we need to replace that position. And then there's probably, as the city continues to expand, it's like business, we've reached a X amount of growth, the responsibilities that you need another person to fulfill some of those. Even if it's not like she's not bringing tasks to do every day, or he or whoever, it's gonna it's gonna expand as time goes on.
Well, this is a person who Tina doesn't want to assume new position, because I thought we were training her, sending her to classes, she was going to school, and I thought all of those certifications were so that she could do that.
No, um, I mean, she is a great backup. And there's lots of things that I give her and have her do, and she's my second eyes on payroll and tons of stuff. But she does not want the responsibility of running everything in the clerk. She's more than willing to be the right-hand person in their second set of eyes and, you know, whatever I need done. Um, but yeah, and you know, what, after she started, I um, the first time annual reports came up, I had her work with me, and that's when she said, this is not for me. And I've asked Stacy, and she says no even faster, but she is fabulous at her utility billing, but um, yeah.
And that, the only thing I'll say as far as your knowledge and your contacts throughout the state, who you, you know, who would be good at something like this for Fairfax in detail? That'd be something to share with with them, hey, I'm retiring, and something might come up, and keep your ears posted, you know. So when it does come up, that transition, just worry about the transition with all the stuff that you do, the numbers, no one's gonna know right off the bat, but.
Okay, so are we ready to move on?
Just real quick, is there someone, like, because I know you've probably spoken to a few administrators around, there's one that just called in for twenty minutes to one of the council meetings, and so we said last week.
I've, I've had one offer for sure. I haven't asked above and beyond that, and yeah, perfectly willing to do that if you thought that would help for like a February meeting or something too.
Marianne, do you be okay changing it to the city staff or?
I think staff. I, I think it makes a big difference. I mean, I was just assuming that since we were sending her to get all these certifications and we hadn't heard anything different, that she was gonna step up and take your place, but knowing that we don't have someone in-house that's been trained on how you were doing everything, that makes a difference. And we weren't, I wasn't aware of that till just now.
I, I would say she's trained on everything except the budget and the annual reports, but she is not willing to be responsible for that, all of that.
So are those things, like, if we hire a clerk that's not quite like up to that level, are, are those responsi, those, some of those responsibilities, are those things that the admin could do or would do? I guess that's my thing, if we're hiring this person, but they can't take any of that load off.
Yes, they will take some of that load off. We envision revising the clerk's job description and, you know, as you draft both of them, if you decide to go with the position. Um, so here, um, budget, just this particular process. So the admin would really be in charge of coordinating all of the department budget, so I wouldn't be talking to the guys. Um, but all the department heads would be talking to the admin about our projects or our numbers and getting them. Now, I might actually work on the, or whoever's clerk, actually work on the spreadsheet, you know, inputting, I don't know, that depends on that person's, you know. But the, the um, like this payroll report that I haven't had time to do, that person would be gathering that and uh, making that spreadsheet, making that report for, for the budget. They, they would spearhead the budget process. I think maybe last meeting I mentioned, you know, like the Bell and African project or annexation or economic development. They're the supervisor for all of the employees that would come off the mayor's plate. So the annual reviews for the employees and, you know, if there's a problem, HR kind of things, they would be handling that, that, some of that would come off my plate.
Yeah, Cynthia does a lot of human resource activity. I, I consider the clerk's position and Cynthia's expertise, this, we talked about this the other day. She's the numbers engineer. That is, would be her primary focus. I'll be administrated stuff outside of it, and then give her the numbers, and she can tell us whether it's gonna work or not work, and where we need to change things, and same with Shane on his en- engineering position. We, because we don't have anybody to handle some administrative things, he's become more than an engineer. He does a great job as engineering, and we would love for him to be, to be the engineering person. And the administrative stuff goes away from that and gets handled elsewhere. Let everybody focus on their expertise and a different cost to the city levels as well. And potentially you could reduce the mayor's salary as well a little bit. I, there's a city nearby where they have both positions and they've reduced the mayor's salary because of having the admin being able to take on more of what the mayor used to do.
Twenty-five cents an hour, how much more can you get?
So anyway, those are our thoughts, why, so if you're comfortable that we just put it in this possible city staffing, and we just kind of look at the numbers.
Okay, more to follow. Um, continuing in road use, um, street light, uh, you, uh, traffic control items. Um, next page, snow removal. Because we never know about that. I'm assuming this year is gonna be higher than last actual, but. Um, Lynn, you want to talk about the brine maker?
Well, mentioned this year, one, also do you know about the brine maker? Um, I thought of it, then, like I said before, there's several different I guess, sizes of different things that machines that you purchase. You purchase a, a little labor-intensive machine in that fifteen thousand dollar range, right in there, a middle-line machine for that thirty to forty thousand. You can go with what kind of DOTs we're shooting for, and they're trying to go this way all across the state. That machine's a seventy thousand dollars. That machine's a seventy thousand dollars plus, um, storage stuff. So my assuming that's closer to a hundred thousand, or is it the DOT goober machine that they did? I'm looking at kind of mid-range machine. It has some technology to it, a little less labor-intensive. What that brine really does, and I didn't give you the literature later, but it helps as this last snowman. You put something down, you're not gonna be able to probably initially start to do in every street. It's just, we're just trying to get into it a little bit. So you do your major driving streets, and what it does is kind of de-bond. So the snow doesn't pack. So this last storm we had, as you drive around, we have two inches of snow fill up the street that's not connected. You go on the highways, they're clear, you know? That's kind of the difference of what you give with that, or what you can't give. Both are temperature-related, you know? Brian only works in certain temperatures, and it's all, it's true. America, they asked me a few weeks ago, it was cold, you know, can you get the library site lock and stuff? But I, I mean, it's all done, but you gotta still have that sun and temperature before and after. So nothing really works until you start getting some of that. So everything still is weather-connected, but, but what's the kind of beginning mission? This kind of what we're kind of trying to shoot for.
And his estimate is forty thousand. You know, we could put it, try and see if it would work all in road use, or you could pay for it all in lost. You know, typically these, um, one-time purchases of, of equipment, that's really what we have tried to use lost for. Or you could split the costs. Um, I've got it here in road use right now, but we can, depending on council decision, we could move that.
Do you know what the lifespan of that is that you need?
Machine, I think a lot of it depends on the cleaning, the wear and tear of it. Both the places I talked to and the other, um, road guys, they meant there's probably a lot, most of them have upgraded their proper machines. Um, and then they try to sell them off to somebody else. The ones I was looking at, they're basically made out stainless steel. So I believe they last quite a while. But there's still a cleaning process, just like everything else. So some like this would be more for intersections, main streets. Main, there's not, the street I'm thinking, the Vanderbilt, you're going with, um, your Highland Street, around some of that, you're throwing a circle, or your Beverly Road. You can start there, and then kind of expand it.
So what do you think the overall investment would be? Like, it's forty thousand for this, but then we have to have different material, like it's not just this.
Sprayer, what we're gonna do is probably make their only, basically, and when you're totes, make a drawbar, so you slide in them to pick up, and let's do, basically like a spray bar for a leather gravity tee. So that's gonna be pretty minimal. Um, if you bought something like that, it can range from, um, a drawbar, just a spray bar for around a thousand dollars on up to fifteen, pretty easy. You can do like a, puts a slide in for the background rest, but.
Around fifteen thousand versus automated slide in.
So this is just the brine maker, so you would have to have a system then to apply it on road.
That's where we're talking about, so we already have that. We're already been trying to make that in the last couple of years. You have the pieces and components for one of them, or one truck. But that part I think, like, it's still pretty, very small, so that's pretty minimal. I'm not saying that you won't someday down the road, wanna do something a little bit more. Even with our new dump truck, um, it's, yeah, they have pretty wet tanks. So when you pre-look at the sand and salt as you're spreading it out, it activates it quicker, faster. So it helps on that process of getting your sand dirty or dry. So, and uses less material. Think, think, I gotta sheet my book, I think it's like one quarter less material is what they say. I don't, sometimes I don't know how much I believe them, but, but that's what they want, that's what they're saying.
They claim the twenty-five percent savings, don't they?
That's what they're saying. And they do have some documentation, they did bring it, just some banners yourself for that, if you want to, but.
We want to put this all in road use or split it up? Or put it all in lost?
Or not even do it ever. It's, it's a, it's one of those things.
It's like, it's one of those things that we don't need it. So, and if we have extra money, we don't know what to do with it, okay, but we don't need it. So I guess it's a question of where we end up with the budget. I'm, I'm not opposed to giving them a new toy if, if we can afford it. But if there's other things that we need worse than this, then that, that would be my question is, you know, if there's give and take there, what, what do they need more than this?
Right now, the DNR hasn't done anything, but the last several years, well, just environment. We're trying to stop the salts from going into the streams and the groundwater and so forth. This is one way, but I hope they are pushing towards that, so.
But the brine is salt brine.
But if you use it one quarter less, then what do you do with the sand and salt that we imply? You know, if you're doing the sand and salt, you're just going straight. Now, this is a solution that you spray down, which takes a lot of stuff, that'll be on it. While the sand and salt we use from plastic, it's just going straight.
Any prediction then, since this would be next fiscal year's budget, so you wouldn't be looking at it for use until next winter? And potential cost increases between now and then?
Oh, always, everything does like any other recent machine. But the, the machine that, there's two of them that I can, I've seen one, and I looked at a couple others, and they were right in that thirty thousand to about that forty, so I wouldn't think there'd be a huge difference, but, so the forties kind of, yes, seem that they're gonna jump their price up. Don't know.
And I guess.
What do I equipment want you on for road use this year? On your equipment wishlist?
Equipment wishlist, no, most of that just replaces the cutting edges, what we can get, you know? Depends on the year, on that. Um, you're getting a dump truck, that's already a order to somewhere, that was huge, you know? So there really is.
That's much of that.
And I guess, um, from a budgeting point, I would suggest you um, consider it in your lost. That seems like you've had some extra, you know, some things that either haven't happened or came under budget, or our revenues are more than we thought. And so, um, it's really easy to see whether you can afford it in lost. And if, if it doesn't fit, then you can split it or use it, move it completely to road use or eliminate it. But it's kind of really easy to see if it fits in the lost. Do you wanna do that? I don't, I mean, I don't really care, have a preference. It's like, it'll be a year down the road and.
I was trying to probably take it in lost, because that's three separate reviews for sure.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Okay, then we're going to culture and recreation. Um, this is library and parks in this. Um, those figures are all from the library board's request. Um, I've got their current CD balance and savings balance up there. And then like in the fire department, the breakdown of the proposed total Walford support, Lynn County's projected support, Fairfax Township, their charges and donations, and then what would be, um, coming from their savings in then tax dollars. And we have added the line about local option sales tax, and we have twenty-five thousand in there. Shane and I talked about that a little bit. He said they just kind of got some rough estimates from a couple of different firms and ran from ten thousand up to about twenty-five thousand, right Shane?
Yes, yeah.
You know, and then they would have some cost for site stuff if they're looking, need some information for, um, from engineering. So the twenty-five thousand, I think is a close estimate. It may not be quite enough. Kathy, do you have any more detailed?
No, I have any.
Cross estimate, okay.
I mean, that's really what we'd like, just find out what it would cost to do something.
Right.
Here, here's what's tough with that is, we haven't even gotten CIP yet. Spending twenty-five thousand and knowing what the cost is, and then when do you do it? I mean, something needs to be done at the library. I, I, I will personally say that, and I agree. But what's tough is when you, you do it, and then, okay, now here's a cost, and then the natural thing is, next is is then to plan it. Well, costs are going up, costs go up on everything, but I think that, that's tough to have in, in there. And what, what it is now, what it comes out with, if that's what ends up happening, what's it gonna be whenever that project is decided to be done? Does it have to be redone, re, rework the numbers? I don't know. I'm not yea or nay, trying to be one to say that it's.
Can I touch on that a little bit?
Sure.
So what the library wants to do is they can put together a plan of what is the best way to proceed. Is it real building addition or living building? I, I think they're probably meaning for the building addition, but this would help them recite that. Also, their one budget, twenty-five thousand, only cost more than twenty-three thousand dollars to do this. And with that, they would, we need the architects with some more help, say, okay, this is going in its paid cost in this next fiscal year. Correct. Understanding it may not happen this next fiscal year, so you assume inflation, five percent inflation. So if it's five years out, we can get a good number, not random, we can change a little bit over that five years, but it should be a pretty good planning number to shoot for, and that's a matter of how much of that is in the city budget, and how much is, you know, fundraising, the outside dollars, how much does the library get, that will be reviewed, so. So this factor is just to help them, I, I think they understand, this isn't, you do this, and then next year we'll, we'll. This is give them the plans so they can, yeah, okay, how far out are we, and how much money do we need? And then, you know, hopefully they get a rendering, a few renderings to help promote it.
Well, this is due diligence, really, to give you something for the decision when it does come to CIP. Rather than right now, I got this proud of the thing of saying, we wanna put it in CIP, and you have no idea what we wanna do. So you need that information to even look at, like, something with CIP in the model in years. And it's to say, what are we even looking at?
As long as the understanding coming from, from me is that if that ends up happening, it's still, you know, where, where do you put it?
Right.
That, I just wanna be clear with that.
Kathy, how much, I mean, don't you have a substantial amount that Vern donated that has to be used for like this? And doesn't it have a timeline where if you don't have it used by a certain time, it goes somewhere else? Right? And it's, I mean, it's a lot.
It's about nine hundred thousand right now, close to a million.
So I, I don't know if you guys are aware of that, they, and they, so they have that money sitting there, and it has to be earmarked.
We don't have it, it's sitting in a trust somewhere.
But, but it, but it, but it has to be earmarked.
Right.
For that, this.
It's twenty years from the step, so. I twelve years.
Okay, so we've got.
We've got, but that's why we let's know what we're.
But that'll go quick, if you have to do a year to, you know, to do the design and this and that.
I did contact the attorney, there's a, yeah, the lawyer that was in charge of that, of the trust. And it can't be used for this stuff, which is what we're hoping we could use it for that. It has to be for.
Absolutely.
Ground.
Okay. I was thinking it was two hundred, not nine hundred, but okay.
Oh, yeah, like almost a million.
That changed, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was like, so we need to like try to move forward, so we don't lose that.
Right.
Yeah, we don't.
Money.
We need to give you some information so that going forward, you can make a decision, because right now you're really in past, you just have.
I like the thought.
Thank you.
And, um, the CIP, there's kind of three phases to it, the one-year, that's good budgeting, you know, those are the numbers that when we see a lot, we find, we're actually moving forward with projects. The, the two to five-year are projects that, they won't happen in this year. They may not happen, but they're likely to happen. It doesn't mean they will, they bump back or completely move. The, the six to ten-year, basically, they're just base holders, and we throw, they find this guy number in there, but.
We've only really been doing that past thirteen years.
Yeah, there's nothing in there that, you know, is substantial, no real diligence or anything, but, you know, somebody, council member, citizen staff says, you know, this is something we should consider doing. So that's kind of how it's broken down. Um, and so like the library, yeah, it's been in sick and tenure, because they know they wanna do something. Now they might kind of get it moved in, bumped up, and said, okay, is this gonna stay there, or is it gonna move up?
Kind of like the trail, you spend one twenty-five to get eight hundred. Same thing, you spend twenty-five to get potentially nine hundred down the road, thanks, yeah. Gotcha.
Okay, is everybody comfortable with twenty-five?
And twenty-five to find out, you know, if you get to one point one.
Yes. Okay, the, um, page two of the culture and recreation is where parks begins, and, um, these are, uh, numbers from Joe. And I will verify the payroll. You know, it's a little harder with his, um, part-time staff and knowing how many hours, but I'll try to get with him and we'll, um, verify that, um, with your decision on payroll for the full-time anyway. And, um, any questions on any of those lines? I don't think there's anything that's outrageously changed. Okay, we're moving on. Um, page three is continuation of, um, parks, now you can see the concession stand, we changed how that's structured, so that line is blank. Um, Joe, you got any specific input you wanted to give, or?
Um, I, I don't believe, you know, there's things that have added this year, uh, community gardens, um, have been added, although we started that, uh, last year. I think this is the first year it's actually seen on the, the, the balance sheet right from the beginning. The movies and entertainment, there is an increase in, in that. Those have been very popular with the residents.
And the bottom part of that page has been projects, um, park projects. Um, the lighting upgrade is complete, of course, the parking lot's been completed, in fact, I could take that off this. Harlem High Parks is, are still, uh, that seventy-six, what is that, Joe, is that restrooms or pavilions or what?
Well, I, I thought that was, uh, the money that we were still waiting for. Is that not accurate?
Oh, it might be, the grant, that's just, but I mean, this isn't revenue, this is expense.
Yeah. Then, then I have it in the wrong spot, though. But that's, that's what that does.
Oh, well, okay. I, uh, yeah, that would be on, like, in the intergovernmental, in those first revenue pages. So we should take that out until they discuss more the CIP, um, projects, okay? Um, so, uh, when, uh, different bonds have had a park purpose, um, we've put it, track it in the checking account. And so the current parks' bond money cash balance is a hundred and twelve. I looked that up today. And then their savings balance is currently forty-five thousand, so those are those two lines that are a little, I don't know whether we wanna lower that one forty-nine or, and, um, stopping the MPO trail, also it's empty, you know? Um, and then the mower, uh, that's in the regular rotation, and that number came from Lynn.
So where would that bond money go to? Or I'm sorry, not bond money, go to the grant money?
The, the, well, it is bond money. I mean, we didn't, haven't received any grant money.
Right.
So it's, we borrowed in a GEO bond for a portion of our, so I've looked to the bond purpose. Um, and it could go for any of the current debt, bond purpose. So at the February, once you discuss CIP, then I plan to give you a report showing, okay, that this money came from this GEO bond, and these were the purposes. And you can use it for what we just discussed tonight, for the CIP or something else.
So when we get that grant money, let's go back to that bond revenue, or bond balance, I guess.
We didn't get any grant money, yes, at some point.
For the Harlem High Park, in case you're. Oh, oh, I thought you were talking about the MPO channel. Um, yeah, that will go, um, into that park designated money, yeah. Okay. Um, and then on page four, culture and recreation, um, uh, this is local option sales tax fund. Uh, this is local action sales tax fund now for uh, park projects. Joe, you want to talk about that?
Sure.
Parking lot.
Yeah, so the Federfield parking lot, you know, we've had that on there for several years and. That's a, that's a big nut on on the lost, so talking with Lynn and and talking with Brian. We think uh, a better way to attack that is in sections. It doesn't all need to be done at once, and we can do it over a four or five year period. And and we've stuck twenty thousand dollars in it to get it started, but you can get it started. Uh, and then in another year, you can do a little bit more, or if it's a year and a half, you can do a little bit more. Another three years, you can do a little bit more, so eventually the project gets done, it just doesn't get done all at one time. So there's not such a a big outlay, and I think uh, if I remember right, two hundred and eighty thousand. Was the number on doing that entire uh, that entire parking lot. So that's, that's the the reason for the twenty thousand on there based off what has been in the past. And then the park signage, this is uh, signage that we will need to do at Harlem Heights Park. Uh, it's gonna need a sign as well as uh. Prairie Creek, and at that time, we probably ought to do something different with the old beat up sign that we have at City Park. As well, at that point, we would have had uh, new signs in all the parks.
The vets memorial uh, number that I think is um, you know, initially the city um. Designated eighty thousand of local action sales tax, and we haven't spent that, so that's just kind of the remaining balance, so. I'm not sure that there are ongoing expenses for the veterans memorial that would require that, we could probably lower that.
Yeah, I I think so too, I I don't think there's any ongoing, the benches have been uh, installed, they came in in December and. Lynn and his group uh, put them out, so uh, going forward, I think is just some upkeep. Of course, we'll probably replace flags on an annual basis at least, that's what we do with the rest of the. Uh, flags we have out into the parks and so forth, so just some uh, general maintenance.
There's no plans for any additional walls, right?
Excuse me?
There's no plans for any additional walls?
There's plans for additional walls when we have enough names, and right now, we're probably looking at twenty or twenty-five years before that that happens, so.
There's two bases there.
What's that?
There's two bases there.
Yeah, there's bases there already, that's already been laid, so the wall, when they're ready, they will uh, have a place to sit. There won't be any construction to the the flooring, I guess, of the memorial, but it's. We, there is a a lot of room left, we have a lot of room right now, so.
How does that work with the Legion as to who pays for what? At this point in time, do they not pay for anything ongoing or?
Well, they they'll pay for stuff ongoing too, they they've got a memorial that will help with some of the uh, upkeep to it, so. If there are flags that need to be replaced, we could go to them, um, so it's, it's a matter of. Uh, you know, who's gonna pay for what, when it it comes in and uh, what needs to be done, you know, the city has committed the. Basically, the the uh, grounds maintenance around it, the mowing and taking care of the shrubberies and that kind of thing, and so.
The Legion got the bill to add the new names, right?
Yeah, Legion Legion got the bill to add the new names, if there was ever a uh. You know, we have the seals that are on the monument, if there was ever an issue with one of those seals, if it. Came off for whatever reason, I don't know how it would come off, but the Legion would probably take out that. That was that uh, expense as well.
Um, eight thousand for building?
Yeah, eight thousand for building structures, um, I don't believe that's gonna carry over, I put it in there. That is actually for the complex to add concrete paths and storage sheds to each of the fields. And I. Our goal is to have that done before the end of June, so actually, that that probably will not transfer over.
No guarantee.
What's that?
No guarantee.
No guarantee.
And then the restrooms.
And then the restrooms, which are in the C I P.
But they're now, but the restaurants say in the C I P show two ninety-five, it says wow five.
I I think two ninety-five is for both of them, is that correct?
So we're at two ten though, is the point.
Right, and this, this was the amount that was in the bid from last year when we did. The park at first, this was the amount, had we done it at that time, that was the amount that was on that bid sheet, that was the amount that I put in here.
Is it? Is it necessary to have the same, I'm assuming we have the same number for both? Is it necessi- I wouldn't think they're both the same size, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say the Harlem Heights is gonna use. It being used way more than Prairie Creek.
I I disagree, I disagree with that, and the reason why is because of the new disc golf.
I mean, is that, is that something where you would just, where we would just basically bid the exact same bathroom and it would go in both places? To save, it gets cheaper, easier and all those things, or you know, design purposes, et cetera, if they build the same thing twice as opposed to. Two separate.
And Shane can speak to that, but I believe that's how it's bid right now on the C I P as well.
What we look at is the same restroom in both locations, but with Harlem Heights, we have sewer and water out there. It's all ready to go, at at Prairie Creek, we have to use paper removal, tap in sewer water extension for slides.
So we're still.
And then there's, there's, you know, some coordination, um, possibly public bidding based on how.
What kind of structures are they?
So at that price or block. Dual restroom, men's, women's, and then a smaller area of mechanical, some storage, not a lot of storage, but. Is block necessary?
Block is is, not only is it a little cheaper, I believe, when maybe a, well, more expensive, however, the the wind point. It's more, it's easier to take care of.
So it would be like the old bathrooms at the park. Build better, build bathrooms are blocked.
Yes, that that whole building is a block, yes.
And I think to your question, the price discrepancy you were talking about wasn't, and correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't there a pavilion also on it?
Yeah, it it uh, Harlem Heights, the pavilion, but I was, pavilion suffered from.
I didn't, I know that made up the difference between the two ninety or something, but I prefer the block.
You go to clean something, the complex, you can't hold it down, and those other walls, and you grow more. They are, you can't do it.
And so, you know, whether they'll stay in or not based on C I P discussion, but that's. Just a placeholder there, and you know, just the building's the one oh five and it's. Uh, Prairie Creek, you have to do some sewer and water line, you know, that might take you up to the two ninety-five rather than the two ten to also.
And it's a, Shane, if I remember right, it's a little bit of, that we need to reach to it, it's not a, it's not like we need to go for a block and a half. We're that far away from it.
There's sewer and water to the park.
Yeah.
There's no services.
Right.
Any other questions on culture and recreation?
Right, so so we ended up with thirty one thousand that we don't need in there for, that's carry over from the. That's memorial, is that correct?
And the eight is probably not needed.
So you've got almost forty that would come out, that could go back in.
I I'm not sure I'd take all thirty one thousand out of the. Uh, Doug's Memorial, I think maybe I'd take twenty seven. Leave some money in there that we maybe.
I'd recommend probably leave a couple of them there just to.
Okay.
Like four or five thousand, you want to keep them there.
Yeah, I put in four. Okay, um, community and economic development, that's our smallest um, function. Uh, Christmas decorations, this is uh, where we would be paying for banners, um. And they wouldn't have to be just the um, fire department banners, but they could be, you know, the city of Fairfax banners, and that need to be replaced. Um, development engineering, legal, planning and zoning is very small. Economic development membership, um, annexation, we don't have an annexation plan, so I I almost put zero in there, but. But you never know, so I guess I'm comfortable with either, we, if one pops up, we can always do a budget amendment. And uh.
Economic development never done anything for us.
Oh, our, our, well, they uh.
The Alliance you're talking about.
Yeah, the C C Rapids Central, I mean, they're the ones that were working with Convergen, we met with them, they were driving that, you know, I. I think they work closely with Alliance, maybe that we are not aware of, but they certainly, they were at the meeting when we met with Convergen, and I think they continue. They uh, you know, that uh, resolution that we made about their high quality jobs, that they helped. Convergen apply to the state for that program, uh, so I would say yes. Okay, moving on, if no other question?
They have their munchings up this month.
You had it, we're saying leaving color retreat, let's go right next.
Okay, the next um, program is general government, uh, and here's where mayor, mayor and council payroll. And that is set by ordinance, and you can make changes now if you want, but it can't take effect until after the next. Election, which would be January of twenty-six. Um, so these numbers should be accurate. Um, and then uh, the clerks section, um. And other staffing needs. Um, so this is where fifty percent of the clerk salary is, twenty-five percent Stacy and forty percent of Tina's. And I would suggest a fourth of the other staffing. The, we don't have an election till November twenty-five. Um, legal. I guess I would suggest maybe we leave the fifty thousand in there, we've already spent twenty, um, again, that's hard to know. Just stab stab in the dark. Uh, page two, city hall, I certainly wouldn't hope that we repeat the hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and eighty from the actual.
Remember that time I said it's a terrible idea?
Um, so looking at our actual so far, you know, I would say the twenty thousand is probably. Close unless we get something unexpected, and again, we can do a budget amendment, it may be security system. Utilities. I, um, it's a little higher than the actual half, but you know, we're going into the winter and those bills aren't. January, February, March aren't in there. Um, it's uh, pretty close to the actual. And um, the equipment line, the other equipment, the five thousand, you know, we take in eighteen thousand in rental. So if tables or chairs need, um, I think we certainly should plan on upgrading some tables. That's where that, uh, the revenue offset comes from. And insurance, that's just on the building. Um, other admin, uh, that's just a small amount for the maintenance guys to um, check the rentals when they're on call, the on-call person does that. The audit, um, engineering, I just kind of doubled, um. The actual, maybe a little less, memberships, um, those come in heavy at the first part. Uh, publishing, printing, that should be um, pretty accurate, sixty-four was the actual, so that's about sixty-five. Um, the sign, that's the lease that we have with the, um. They own, the company that owns the strip mall and the sign, uh, we have the equipment to run it, but we pay a lease. Um, I T work. Uh, newsletter, the ad revenue's fifteen thousand. Um, our computer system. Ten is probably a little high, we probably go with the eight on that, um, that we have in the current equipment. Office supplies, I don't see anything that's out of the ordinary there. And um. We do transfer out of lost for the city hall bond payment, and I will throw that in when I do all the transfers at the end, it is already showing on the debt service page.
What we were talking about a couple, eight months ago about website.
Yeah, they're coming to the February meeting, and that will, those expenses, I think, will be this fiscal year.
What would category would that go to website?
Yeah, it'd be into website, but I just don't know what their proposal is at all. So my guess is that they're gonna be, you know, uh, heavy fee to design it and get it up and running, and then ongoing. The hosting, I think, is is very low, so.
I talked this up by the shop last week, and there was a, I will get you to check with you on track that. The coding that the website uses is different from normal, so they have to put together some sort of development or. Design and then the maintenance or the hosting, it's very low after that. We'll worry about that next.
So anyway, the city hall bond payment comes out of lost, um, and the reason we did that is because when we were leasing the building, that came out of lost. So we just kept it in the same category. Um, so this next page is capital formula, it's the formulas, capital project and. Typically, uh, we have not separated out into separate capital projects from. We're just getting so many that I thought, maybe it would be good, the main spur thing was to keep the ARPA money. Well-tracked and easy to pull reports because um, they want us to. So um, we have the bridge engineering in here as a capital project. And um, so these amounts will fill in for the C I P, and then the well, um. Non-ARPA, ARPA and S R F, I mean, we have a five hundred fifty thousand dollar planning and sign loan. Then the tower maintenance, that was a G O bond, and so was the bridge engineering, and then the um, treatment engineering planning. And we don't currently have a sewer infrastructure capital project, but I'm sure eventually we will. Okay, so now we're choosing the enterprise funds and the water in the sewer, have the revenue right on the top of the page. Um, so that gives you the current rate, the last time they changed, um. Was just to change the debt service fee, went to thirteen fifty, and I just put a little parentheses there that seventeen was recommended. And then uh, showing you some uh, sample bills there. Um, oh, I thought I filled in the number of bills, we had a eleven fifty-eight bills in December. And um. So these revenue projections are not with a rate increase. Um, I like to try to see if we can do what we need to do without raising them. And of course. It would always be my recommendation to have the debt service fee where it should be, but we can, um. Next month, when I have the projected bond uh, balances, we'll know how much the shortfall is, and. If you remember right, whatever the shortfall is in the water debt service, we are using just regular water, so it's just coming from everybody's rates, not. Not the debt service fee, just the user fees, and then we supplement up, because of course, we're making the payments as required.
Excuse me, when you look down at water expenditures and wages, you don't have those numbers yet, but do you anticipate? Um, with a recent retirement, that wouldn't be totally offset by increases in wages, would it?
I think it will go down.
Should still go down.
Yeah.
So that should help us a little bit anyway.
Yeah.
So honestly, at the rate, if I'm reading it correctly, you're actually bringing in more revenue than expenditures, is that correct?
Well, the expenditures total isn't correct, yes, I don't have wages in there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, it was. I was gonna say, it was.
I mean, you can look at the current budget. You know, and. Eight sixty seven, five fifty and eight ninety seven, but that's with the water study and that's with some. Some project stuff, so it's, you kind of have to look at the operating to the operating, so. Six fifty five to five eighty three is the current budget. So yeah, it is covering the operating expenses. Uh, let's see, if I have a total here for. So. Okay, so there is. If you just look at on page three of the water in the debt service fund. It looks like the total is two thirty three, eight eighty. And our revenue for the debt service is one ninety seven, six. But you also have to cover the transfer out of debt service, so that shows your shortage there. The revenue debt is paid right out of the debt service, so that's why those are there. The other ones are gonna be on the debt service page because they're, they're water purposes within a geo fund bond, so. Questions on Brian, do you have any input on projects or? You'll see the fifty thousand again for the truck is there.
Skits here, we doing a new lease, seven matures this year?
Well, um, that's what our paperwork shows and all papers paperwork shows not till twenty five, right?
Yeah, that was a little confusing banging on there, the the way they recorded that we, if we decided to push it. We could get a free year use out of the machine, basically, so.
So the council took action on the paperwork with the Barney attorneys helping us up, okay? And then they didn't get me correct paperwork. Long time, six months or more. They dropped something off and didn't have the right numbers, dropped something off, didn't have the right numbers. Then they wanted the bonding attorney to sign this form and. Bonding attorney says, no, we're not signing that coverage. So then they came back again, yeah. So they're going off when they actually finally got assigned paperwork and. We're going off when the council took the action, so that's, yeah, we'll take a break. Anything you want to point out, Brian?
What's that?
Anything you want to point out or?
I don't think there's anything special on there. This stuff that we're general maintenance that we're gonna look into a little further than we have been in past.
So you'll see the utility line is really high. So the. That's covered, the high part of it is covered by. It's covering the splash pad usage. Um, you know, we bill ourselves and then repay it, but we get that revenue back in. So the splash pad water usage split between. Does it split between water and sewer? I haven't know that. I think we do, but I should, hang on. I believe it is. Yes, it is. Yeah, it is. So that's why the both those lines are high, but. We bill ourselves, we charge it to those funds and the revenue from that bill goes right back into the water sewer fund. But it has to be shown in the revenues and has to be shown. Any other questions about water or Brian, any other input? Sewer pages are structured just the same. The sewer revenues at the top, it gives you the current rates. Those haven't changed since twenty twenty. And you have. The bond retirement fund, just like you do for water, you can have the regular and the fund retirement. Utility line is high, but it's offset with revenue. Don't think there's anything unusual or new. Um, I didn't see anything on building maintenance repair line, Brian. Do you have any idea? Well, I didn't see it on my paper. Twelve five was the actual. They've only done seventeen sixty one. What would you like that to be, you know, or you can give back to me if you want. You can check your records and maybe you just didn't write it on what I had, or maybe I was looking at a.
I'm, let's start.
Okay. And you can double check on that. The other equipment line, unless I fat fingered it, is, is that supposed to be only twelve hundred or is it supposed to be twelve thousand? Okay, that's my fact. Operating supplies, the three thousand is a lot less than our current budget, but it's more in. Line with the actual, so I don't know if this year you had. You guys had some special plan for the operating supplies or not? So maybe just that the eleven thousand is high and that might not be needed.
Yeah, no, I think you're probably lying. We'll just leave that for you there.
And for on page three, you see the fifty thousand again for the dump truck. Which is the final contribution to take us up to four hundred thousand. And then the sewer debt. And the sewer debt fee is enough to cover obligations. We'll look at that in detail and certainly we can lower it. I don't anticipate having to raise it. Because I know that fund has a balance, but we'll look at that.
Is there anything on my grant at the top of there, Paul?
I don't have anything. So you want me to pencil in something?
Yes, please, let's do. Let's see if I work.
And then if you want to check on that.
Yes.
So the Heartland Heights participation. You know, there's many different aspects of the Heartland Height participation, and that'll be in the C I P discussion. Any questions about sewer? Okay, then the last two enterprises are the garbage and the. Farming. So currently, the garbage rate is twenty one dollars. They are. I thought I updated that. I know I didn't. I must not have saved that. So that three oh three, that's at. Twenty two fifty, I believe, proposed times the eleven hundred times twelve plus six thousand. Can somebody do that math for me? Set come up with three oh three, I think. You can see they're raising their rates to twenty sixty six. And I think right now there's a dollar sixty difference between their rate and our rate. And. Going to twenty two fifty would be just a little over the dollar sixteen. And the. Yeah. This is not. I must not have saved the last time I did this. So the current garbage fund balance is like eleven thousand. I had this all filled in. And the balance of the garbage fund at the end of June is was like a thousand hundred or maybe about eleven hundred. But that was with twenty six thousand being transferred from the general fund into the garbage fund, so we were supplementing. The garbage operations over and above the monthly fee. So do you, I mean, we definitely need to raise the rate.
Did we raise anything last year?
The solid waste we raised every year.
We raised it based on what the.
The contractor rates, yeah. And you can see their schedule of fees here. Remember, you just signed a new contract with them. So I would suggest going to twenty two fifty, but you could make it a little less, I guess.
And this is garbage, right? Water, sewer, this is garbage. Was that twenty six enough for the whole year increase?
Well, it took us, I mean, the transfer amount, that took us to eleven hundred positive at the end of the fiscal year.
So we're short roughly twenty five thousand here.
So. In our discussions on glass recycling, that was one of the things that. We need to decide is whether to actually include an increased cost. Or just say it's such a minor cost, or whether we can just go with this. That's not be decided tonight, but that is a discussion point.
How much was that recycling program?
Amounted to like a quarter or a household per month or something at the map.
Say, I was thinking it was even less than that.
Yeah.
So one hundred times.
Twenty two fifty times twelve plus six thousand.
That's where you get the three oh three, because the.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Say a buck ninety over eleven hundred people gets you twenty five thousand.
Oh, another.
So you'd be still short of that twenty five hundred. Not too far. These, these, they're all listed in the contract?
Yes. It would have been in a packet. When were they here? February, maybe? For what was last year? February or March of last year? So I guess the question is. Do you want to just raise under twenty two fifty and still probably be short a little bit, or do you want me to try to calculate what you would need? So you don't have to transfer general money into the garbage, and then we could look at either option in February.
I'd say get us numbers, see where we're at solving. And then we'll go on.
And you're still confident in the salary allocation percentages for all of these funds for like species and your timeless fee?
Yeah, I do not charge any of my time to garbage. It's just such a minor, you know, we usually. Payroll is only a very small part. And then we only like A P, we send one check a month, you know, so it's just not, so I don't charge any mind to garbage. But Stacy's is twenty five percent and Tina's is. I know, I've got it on a spreadsheet somewhere, um, maybe seven, maybe twenty percent. I think Tina's is twenty percent. And Stacy's is twenty five percent. And yeah, I'm confident, I certainly Stacy should be twenty five percent. I mean, because there's garbage on every water bill. True, you know, there it's not involved in the meter reading, but. It's involved in every payment that she posts and every bill that she issues for residential. Questions for garbage? Farming. I don't have a clue. So I don't know why the actual we took in sixteen and now we only took in fifty one. Different crop, I don't know. Yeah, I looked that up for the audit today. I think there was nine point seven acres available. To farm, yeah, it's less. So do you want me to put five thousand in there or six thousand in there for revenue?
Because we expanded the community gardens again.
Yeah, we didn't expand, we didn't take any more farm land.
We're just leasing that, we're not a.
We're contract farming again, just because the amount kept changing of amount of ground. And leases usually send like a three year. So. I need to think that the revenue is five and the expenses are five, but. The revenue so far this year was less than the expenses. That's not good.
Well, that's one question at one point, yeah. We missed exit.
I don't know, I'd say let's try it one more year. It could have been beans to corn kind of.
Well, also the reality is, even if we are technically like this year, you know, there's what, four hundred eighty in the hole, that's significantly less than what we. Mow and seed, maintain.
Could just be simple.
So dump does that, they rent goats, feed out all those weeds and stuff around.
The next page was just a sub-tolling page, and then the next is debt service. And I have this all filled in with our debt schedules. The that top page shows how much is coming from fifth. General, lost, water and sewer in the total. Shows a breakdown each bond issue, where the money's coming from. You have questions, let me know. Think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay. Yeah, I think. So it's empty for February, well, we won't know to the C I P standard, but February, you're gonna have a lot of updated numbers.
Absolutely, I'll have a special separate report on payroll. Showing the percentages and stuff, and then I'll have those numbers fed into there, and then depending on what the council decides. That's the I P, I'll move C I P, and if we think we're doing a bond, I'll move that in, I'll have a transfer to put it out. Yeah.
So I had a big flip, so there's a couple of different pages, they will, and first funnel. Stay from gathers and C I P, the first two pages are the same. The top page is the F Y twenty five C I P, and the second page is the F Y twenty five C I P. The reason you have two of those is that first page I took out the notes, it's a little bit bigger and a little easier to see than one that. The third page is the twenty twenty nine C I P, you have a five year C I P, and the last page is the twenty thirty four. For the ten year C I P, so. We'll start on the first page and kind of run through it, and if you have questions or. Doments, just jump on in. First project is the right way acquisition for the bridge project. And then the second one is the design engineering for the bridge project. And the third one is the Eagleview Drive, West Seminole Road, Highway one fifty one intersection, real line of the project, so. Those three projects and last year's C I P. So those three projects, and last year's CIP, all bundled together, we had like eight hundred or eight hundred, two thousand, we set aside for that. Since then, those projects have been built down into individual projects, so I listed them individually. The the third one, the Eagleview Drive intersection project. We got a little bit of money money set aside that's needed for that. The bulk of that three hundred thousand is for construction. So what we're anticipating is that the intersection project, draw up the bids this winter. And would start construction in twenty twenty five, so the beginning and the end of this upcoming CIP. Um, so we're anticipating maybe give them May, June, um, starting construction. So we may have one or two pay applications, so that's that three hundred thousand is in month four. That's a concern, we can, you know, put out bids in June for start date, so do it down. Money committed to it for construction until next fiscal year. Um, the next one, fourth one down the list is the maintenance and painting of the elevated water storage tank. We had a lot of discussion last week on that, there's no additional funding for that. Um, Highway one fifty one improvements, city participation. So we did get a final breakdown, city's costs are two hundred sixty two thousand. So we had two eighty five set aside for that, so that would be twenty three thousand dollars additional money. I am reviewing through that, just to make sure that number's good. But that should be the high end, so I assume it's good. I want to do one final look.
What, what is that for specifically?
So the highway project that happened a couple of years ago. So Highway one fifty one, the city had participation costs in that, utilities and different things, side street improvements. And and so we've had that on the books now for four or five years and.
We're just waiting for their invoice.
Yeah, and if we finally get their their breakdown during the last couple of weeks. Next one's the cemetery road highway, or the cemetery road trail extension projects. Last week we talked about that, we're removing it. Um, I left down there just pointing out that we do have a hundred twenty five thousand dollars. Set aside for that project, so that might become available for some, but then it has to go into certain part of the bond.
Yeah.
Um, the next one down, the new water supply well, number four, an observation well project. So that project and the one right after it, the water supply treatment. Um, for the new well and the well field, planning and preliminary engineering report. So I talked to Cynthia today. City has, um, eight hundred fifty four thousand dollars budgeted towards. The well project from ARPA funds and then five hundred fifteen thousand. Now, and SRF planning and these, um, design planning, such development loan, and as a no interest loan. So you total those two numbers together, it goes up to one million three hundred sixty nine thousand dollars. We did give you the backup amongst those two projects, there's. Hundred one point, one million two hundred twenty three thousand available in ARPA funds and SRF P and D loan money. Um, for the well and then the, uh. The treatment planning and preliminary engineering report, that project is a hundred forty six thousand, that's the agreement. Still most of that, I think there's eighteen twenty thousand dollars left on that, that's almost done, so. With that, the remainder left is three hundred sixteen thousand needed for the destruction of the well project. There's Church Street and the Church Street Vanderbilt Street intersection. That project, um. We've got anticipated, now that does include the sewer that would tie onto the Highway one hundred, or the sewer that was untied at one fifty one. We extended it up between San Juan and the houses there, and tie into the east west sewer, some on the north side of the state park, the complex. That's assuming that project happens this year. If it doesn't happen, the council doesn't want a budget for that at this point. That sewer work will get moved over to the, uh. Treatment project, the design and ultimately the construction for water supply treatment facilities.
Shane, quick question, just so I have this kind of organized by head. So what you're talking about right now, church and Vanderbilt, that intersection is utilities and the repave of just that intersection, correct?
It's it's the pavement from the highway pavement.
Okay.
From one. All the way down Church Street and then the intersection, Vanderbilt and Church Street.
Okay.
And the utilities that come along. Now, the sewer I'm talking about, we stubbed a sewer underneath the highway with the highway project. And ultimately, we'd have to tie in that sewer that's just sitting there empty now and tie it into the just to be sewer to the south. And that's needed in certain well, the well field. If we start designing this summer, we can get it out with bids and construction in twenty twenty six. So it's year and a half to two years of design and DNR reviewing process and then bidding. If we acquire the easements for that sewer. With the well field, we've got the SRF funding, which is federal funding, so. If we can do it as part of the Church Street project and provide those sewer easements, it'd be ideal, but the. Church Street project, I'm not sure if that's a high priority.
It's cause, it's cause I know we've talked years of kicking the can down the road and I know we can't do A without B. It's like we can't do the well field without doing the utility improvements. And we need to do utility improvements and the street overage at the same time from a causes, uh, standpoint. But I think that time is finally come, so that's why I'm just wanting to make sure that I'm understanding that it's replacing the road from one fifty one. Up to the intersection and then including the intersection a little bit each way. And that also includes the sewer port or that's separate.
It's the sewers included in the number that's showing. And that one hundred thousand under planning acquisition will be acquiring the easements. So if if the Church Street project doesn't happen this year, that one hundred thousand might have to be moved down a few rows to the.
In my opinion, I think we finally reached that point that it gets taken care of.
So did, did we ever decide, cause I think the last time we got to this point, we struggled with. No, not that, it was more that intersection by the star. How far to the south we go down that street? Because there were different issues with driveways and sidewalks and. So what, how far down does this include, would this include? Cause I think that was our our stumbling point on that side.
Yeah, I think we, I think we go down to the south side of Kathy's house and the Star Bar with the street improvements.
Do we stop at the edge? Cause there, right, wasn't there an issue with the drainage through there and sidewalk?
There's a bunch of options we looked at for the drainage.
On the sidewalk.
That would be on the east side.
There's there's drainage improvements that are needed, but also get the.
The actual intersection plan, I didn't say things.
Something. I just know we cut it back to that point and then we cut three or four handles like eh, and we didn't do anything with it.
Yeah, I think, I think we include, but to your point of how far to go, I don't have an answer to that, that that'd be an interesting question. Cause I I understand wanting to go as possibly as far as. The fire department, but I also.
I just, the budgeting wise, it makes a big difference if we stop here or we stop there, is why I'm asking.
That's just, yeah, it's, you do it at the same time, but I mean, personally, probably not, cause I think. Finishing that to the fire department or all the way to the lit street is.
There might be other storm drain, you know, and things that would add to that.
Yeah, that would.
And then the other question I had was, the other issue we had, um, I think was some of the, um. Landowners, if we did the drainage correction behind san kids and ran it up. That we weren't, everyone wasn't on board with that, right? That's not part of.
This is just sewer, that is.
Just sewer, so it's just running sewer behind there. So that would run from behind san kids and behind all those parcels.
Basically going where the existing sewer is, there's a few improvements. Cause there used to be a lift station back there, remember, and then the two thousand six project took that out and there's kind of this. There's. Several manholes and there's links in the sewer and stuff. So this is just getting us more elevation and upset.
So this runs sewer, it doesn't do anything about correcting the drainage?
Nope.
Okay.
They don't want their drainage.
Well, I just, because you're back there digging, I don't want them to, you know, think that we're doing.
That we're gonna sneak in there, ha, fixed the drainage, but I weren't looking.
Shane, um, the other thing, Shane had mentioned it, had asked the question at some point too about this would be the time to move the utilities underground. If we saw these are correction.
Yeah, that's if you wanted to bury the, like, the overhead lines along Church Street.
Did you ever get a cost estimate from the line on it?
I'd have to check on that.
Is that a shared cost or that's all in the city?
At least getting some done for free, but the utility's just doing it. Cause they'd rather have a.
A lot of different situations that go into that. But I can check on burying those utilities.
And how much more do we have to widen out this street to the twenty eight foot on Church there?
I forget, cause we had some parking and some not parking.
What's that?
Like, that's what I was thinking too, like, that would be.
I don't, I don't remember all the details.
Okay.
What is it right now? It's it's less than twenty four foot. It's not as wide as it should be.
The, uh, the other issue with that is just the UP Vanderbilt Street, they're awesome.
Right.
Because if we obviously shut down that road, everything's gonna come in on the property and that's where the trucks are getting, I don't know, it's coming from the north, the last. So I did call again to the UP railroad this morning.
Well, there's the other option to be what, South View to, but you're gonna come back that way. And then if you wanted to get to the feed mill, you'd have to go down like. Or Hard Street and then, yeah. Summer.
So, yeah, there's a lot that goes into Church Street and then.
Vanderbilt's definitely has to have first row of four church.
That's.
Soon, uh, road.
Not even that, or just the access, just keep saying.
More or less just the low boys that get hung up there, right?
Yeah.
Not necessarily.
Like the grain trucks, their front, their legs.
Body jacks are getting.
Their their jacks are getting whacked out.
And they're still using it even though we put up the new signs, they got used to using it and now we're changing back.
It's currently written.
I thought that victory forty was a lot, big church shooting Vanderbilt, I was thinking that.
I honestly thought so, but I think we were finding things, sort of.
The street part was over two.
Yeah.
Well, this is including the street.
Yeah, this is everything.
Right, Shane?
Last time I saw it, it was.
The Church Street Vanderbilt includes.
That four fifty includes a street, right?
Yeah, but there's, it's on, it it extends in the next year, there'd be additional funding, so some of these projects is extended to two to five year.
So this is only partial cost?
Yeah.
So the other part would be hidden in the next.
Maybe we'll get the three and five year. Or two.
That's the action, I understand.
Yeah, that's where the two you're talking about is. Yeah.
So we'll, we'll run through this. The two to five years CIP is point out the one we said, I mean, she can bid, commit.
No, I, I never talked about it.
One year, you gotta do that.
Cause when I first saw it, I'm like.
So then the, uh, next one is the twenty twenty two water main extension on the UP railroad. That project's currently off bid, will be done in the spring. And we talked about the Vanderbilt Street improvement projects at the, uh, Union Pacific Railroad crossings. The only comment or question on that is if council wants to set aside some money to help cover whatever the UP has. Maybe they come back and say that or nothing, there's no cost, or maybe it comes back in. You know, six hundred thousand, I don't know. They don't want to answer that, so. Um, Stoneman Road Utility Extension is a street paving project. So that's the, uh, the improvements on Stoneman that. If council wants to go ahead and do that, we kind of, uh, group that up with the Eagleview Drive and West Cemetery Road intersection project.
Does anybody have a desire to do Stoneman?
Zach Sabowski.
I, I guess, I know he definitely wants to. He wanted us to do it back, I was wanting to pave it, it's like fun killing it, something for two or three lots, so.
He wants the utilities run, he's after, he doesn't care, he doesn't care about paving the road, he just wants utilities run down there, is what he's after, I think.
Well, the utilities and only sidewalk, they would connect that to long-term betrayal, the the new.
Do we have any desire for that on this here CIP? Sounds like a no. Boom, cut, next. Bathrooms, touch, bam.
Well, the next one's the Eagleview Drive Water Main Extension, so this is similar to the Stoneman Road today. If if council wants to do it, we've given up with the intersection realignment project.
Is this just to get a concrete?
No, this is, uh.
Oh, it's the other way down the front row.
We had Sabowski's first subdivision on the north edge Eagleview.
Yeah.
And we inhale these, I believe, it put in the water main, it's just sitting empty.
Yeah.
And so this would connect the water main that's being done with the intersection realignment project, that are.
So it's like that furniture.
It's on to a hundred foot of water main.
Yeah.
So they ran the pipe and we would have to run it up and then connect it in.
Run it north.
But we wouldn't necessarily have to do that, cause we're not gonna do the road improvements up there yet. So that's why he's asking, do you want to do it, do you know?
You don't have to do it, it's just, we're the closer to tie it in.
The question is, do we want to, because there's more. Commercial properties up there.
Yeah. Their fire protection, their.
There's quite a bit up there.
They are only private well currently, but again, they think, yeah, twenty five, they're only supposed to have so many people up to.
On to that, I think there are more people relying on.
Yeah.
Those are crazy, DNRs.
So then if if we have them hook up, then do we, um, just let them hook into us whenever they want, or how does connection fee or?
There there's.
How do we do that?
In the development agreement, I think they have to get it all tested and cleaned out to make sure.
Just once I get.
You know, disconnect their wells.
Give us their well.
I think they actually, maybe they have their well water in there.
Yeah, they do.
They'd have flushed all that out and then run, disconnect their wells before we'd actually connect to it.
Yeah.
Then we connect to it and then people have to. If there's, I don't know if there's connection fees, that may, it may have been waived.
I don't, I thought we did something.
Maybe because we hadn't had to throw that water by there.
Yeah, cause they put the pipe in maybe, I don't.
Pipes in there.
Yeah.
That's why we should bring it up, cause it's, it's like four hundred, four hundred.
So if we run it up, we aren't gonna force them to hook up though, are we?
They're trying to.
Yeah.
They're putting that money in there. They're trying to turn target out there, but you can't use them.
Well, I'm just saying, if you do that, you're gonna have all those people that would want to hook up eventually will be in here angry because they now have perfectly good wells that they have to.
But they knew that.
Abandon.
But though, I don't know how good that water is.
It sucks, that water's horrible out there.
Well, then if we're doing it for service.
It really, it all has to be treated, cause it's got so much iron, it's, it smells like sulfur, you can't drink it.
I probably keep the ninety one in there. Yeah, I think that, and then Stoneman down the road, and once that gets closer, that could be down the road, but. Eagleview for sure. I just see, I see issues, not necessarily just the utilities, but landowner issues along Stoneman.
I'm fine with the bridge project of getting. The utilities across the creek, well, yeah, that all cut out. But I don't know about running away on Stoneman. The only thing, and I, one way or the other, it doesn't matter, B. The only thing is, we're out there tearing it up, Stoneman's getting disturbed, you know, getting beat up, used a lot. We're probably gonna have to spend money doing an overlay on it. So I mean, it's not nearly as much as, you know, completely improving and doing that's what, uh, overlay. But then if Sabowski comes back and they've got a big project and they need sewer in a couple of years, now we're back tearing it up. That's kind of the line of thinking of, you know, throwing it out there for sering.
Well, that's what I say, again, I. Instead of all, we're all getting disturbed, you know, while we're there, it's tore up anyway, but I don't know about going the whole two blocks down.
I think we gotta look at the big picture on how much we'd love to. Do for the whole year and then figure out, but what's. do for the whole year and then figure out what's, but what's.
Again, Stallman and Eagle View, you know, there's, there's some that will be passed on to the next CIP, next stage, so. Stallman has some funds in there. So Eagle View's not as much, but there's still some.
There would be more Eagle View on the following.
There, there is still gotta, yeah, there's still gotta, this is just design and it's not filling it. All the secondary things around it. Another one, so.
So then Stallman.
Second page is the same.
Took all the notes off it from the second period.
Yeah.
I mean, just my thought process is we have some really huge products, projects coming up. And last year, we rolled this to slash and we did very successfully. But that should probably be our, except this year, this week, though. We got Eagle View Bridge. We got Church in Vanderbilt. We'll both grow that sewer and utilities. And the well, wells and the treatment facility. So the question I ask myself is, what do we want for a field to be?
So the Eagle View is the ninety thousand plus another fifty?
Yeah. Stallman is two ninety and then plus eighteen for the eight oh five.
Yeah. So about half million.
So that's where I'm not to clean up Stallman this time. And I understand having those are potentially not relevant.
Well, Stallman would be over, no, then eight, eight hundred and five thousand plus two ninety.
When we originally looked at it and all the improvements, it was one point four, but heck, that is what, four years ago?
Yeah, it's going through the church district considering.
Right.
That's part of their.
Yeah, at that time, some of that cost is now in the intersection.
Yeah. But we're still.
Alright, um. So the next one on the list is the design for the water supply treatment facility project. That we'd anticipate starting that late spring, summer. Uh, like I mentioned, get in line to actually start construction twenty twenty six. And that'd be a two to three year construction to that. Um, street.
We're gonna know what we need for treatment either.
Well, I think, I think they're a pretty good idea and that's what that pilot is that, you know, it's kind of been thrown around the last several months. Um, you know, Kevin and Brian and the guys have been putting that together, working with I H G and put it on, uh, the pilot.
So, do we need to do five? I mean, can we push that back a year until we get four actually under construction and see where we're at? With four? I mean, does it matter if five is one year off schedule because we won't even, we'll have four up? I mean, I, it's just a lot of money for something we technically will need because it's gonna be phased. Well, we can use four and then help the treatment, right?
It needs to be treatment.
Right, but she talked about well five.
And well.
I'm talking about the design fees for the new treatment facility and.
Yeah, well, yeah, most, most of that's gonna be in your treatment. The well's not gonna be, when, when it's all said and done, I think that number overall is like fifteen million dollars. For design and payment and, and construction of the facility.
So, so even though we're, we're digging well four, so this is designed, this is designed for four, not designed for five?
Yeah.
So we can't use it until.
Well, this is designed for the treatment and for five.
For four.
For the, the, all the water supply.
Yeah, all the wells that will go there, but you can't use four until the treatment is in, right?
And.
Right.
Correct.
And right now, we don't know how bad that treatment, what that, what the treatment facility will look like because we don't know what the water quality is.
We have this idea.
We have an idea.
We'll just go off of all three, which is gonna match it for the height of the lava for, or just waiting right now for the okay from the D N R so we can start the pilot. Which, after we get the results of that, we'll then proceed with the design of the treatment, cause we'll know what parameters it can go off of then.
Cause I think it's based on the depth and correct with the wrong, it's gonna be mostly iron treatment as opposed, cause it's a deeper well, whereas the shower ones are ammonia and freidium.
That's the bigger problem.
Yeah.
And so then we're doing biologic, biological ammonia removal with it and that's what pilot's for, so.
So well four, we would, once that's up and running, then we shut down one and two because of.
They will stay online as a backup, in case we need the, the volume of water, but the did by doing four and five, we're gonna have a whole lot less ammonia, which is what our nitrates and nitrates come from. And limiting that will help with not having that problem. So the more that we can use on four and five and not one and two, there's better water quality. What about that and done?
So adding four and keeping one and two on hold to remain in the system as we have more growth, that's what started all this. How much more can four take without needing five?
Well, that's, that's the problem. It's ba- basically, if we don't do five, we have to keep one and two and three all online to be able to feed the amount of water that we need, especially in the summertime. By doing five, we should be able to take one and two offline with the lesser water, water quality out of those two and use them as a backup as necessary for water volume when needed, but we don't have the lesser quality getting put into the system all the time. So.
So.
There's still the chance you're gonna lose.
So this is one million, over a million dollars just for the design? Not, it doesn't build the treatment facility. It's just the design of the treatment facility?
The total cost is like sixteen million.
And it's just for the design for well number five? So it doesn't actually get us well number five, right? And it's over a million dollars?
Well, five is included, but it's mostly for the treatment.
Mostly for the, yeah, it's a well, so.
So that's just the design for the treatment is a million dollars? Why is it so expensive?
Cause I don't want my water to taste like shit. I think initially, not to be lit, but I think there's a lot of, uh, there's a, there's a lot to it and I can't remember the exact description of it. But the, the.
So what is it building? Like a, a thing like we have over here? I mean, is it the same, that's the type of treatment facility it would be?
No, it's much, it's much more involved than they just treatment at well three.
But I mean, what will, will it look like? Something like that? Will we have a big sewer treatment plan over there?
It's gonna be a bigger, it's gonna be a bigger.
Inside a building, but it's gonna be a little bit different looking building. It's gonna have to be tall. So it's gotta be at least two stories tall to fit some of the stuff that they're talking about. So the size of it is gonna be n- not crazy. It's just gonna be, uh, it'd be tall looking building. So we're trying to do, and just initial idea is trying to keep it so that it's aesthetically pleasing.
It's in the Berlin Africa plan.
Right.
That's why I'm asking all these questions.
Yeah, but it's not, it's, everything's gonna be, the treatment part of it will be all inside, so.
So that's completely different than the treatment system that we use now that's.
No, that's all inside too. The wastewater is outside.
Yeah.
But the well, uh, well three itself is all inside built. And as well as the new one will be that way. It's just, there's a, one of the processes that has to have a, um, air feed system to inject air into it for the biological part. And one of the suggestions was putting it on the roof, which is fine, but they are not sure how noisy it's gonna be. They said it's fairly noisy. So to eliminate that, you'd have to compensate the building being bigger to put it inside to eliminate the noise that will eventually be coming to that area and.
We're also looking to size the building for two to well five.
And yes.
Yeah, and be designed larger to handle not just four and five, but six and.
And, uh.
It's just.
It apparently could put walls that were exposed.
I mean, yeah, it's a lot, but we're designing, cause that's, I, where the.
That's where it's all gonna go.
All our future wells are gonna be as one, two and three get phased out. Um, because one is a one that's already on its last legs. That will be ninety nine.
Either one could be.
Yeah, fifty nine, seventy nine, ninety nine. So we're already behind.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure I'm wrapping that, cause so this is, and so the next thing after we, this is we actually have to build the facility.
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to cost wise, where that puts us.
Total first day, fifteen, sixteen.
And.
Yes.
Yeah.
Does this.
Self-funding. Well, that's what I need, cause you, if you get all these things started, can we afford to maintain down the path?
Yes, on the water.
One point one nine also includes design for all the wastewater, but.
Well, it's just, it's just getting the site work and extending the sewer.
Yeah. To it. Is that all part of this design too? Okay.
Well, there's, there's some design on the, on the other side because then it's, it's more construction engineering than that one. And, uh, two to five year.
But this is more just process engineering?
This is more the, the one point one nine million is, is basically, yeah, it is up. And then on the two to five year.
Okay, they're both.
You gotta make six hundred and fifty in engineering and then thirteen four seventy in construction.
What year, what year is that? Thirteen four, what year is the thirteen four seventy?
So that would be for, we'd need that money to basically complete the six. That'd be for the constructions.
It's about two years.
So start to finish the full project whenever the, the engineering starts to where it's all built is huge.
Well, moving forward, what, what the anticipation is that if, what well four will be done this summer. Summer or fall, but that can't be used until you have the treatment.
Yeah.
So the treatment will be constructed in twenty six, twenty seven and then to twenty eight. And then if we do well five with that, you have wells four and five and the treatment online sometime in twenty.
So four to five years, fifteen million dollars in today's prices.
That's, I mean, that's assuming inflation, but.
Yeah, I get it. Rough numbers, but I'm just trying to look at, you know. You got a lot of other projects going on, so it's just to keep that all behind.
And Shane did provide council a couple of months ago, a projection as to what that would impact, how that would impact the monthly wire rebuilds.
Yes, I'm assuming it'd be a lot, uh, be out of water debt service.
Yeah, I'm assuming it'd be a revenue debt. And so you'd have to.
We, we have to.
Yeah.
That's the reality is we, we don't have a choice. We can't, we can't bond that much. Our geo debt capacity isn't high enough to take that debt, to take this revenue debt.
Right, and then a revenue bond is gonna require, um, every year you take in enough to pay your expenses plus ten percent, ten percent and twenty percent, depending on how the bonds are.
Those typically twenty year bonds?
Well, if you go USDA, they're forty. That's our effort twenty.
Forty year bond.
So in all this.
Now, but before that suffers.
And, and, and all this stuff was broken. We provided a.
Yeah.
Engineering report back in October, I believe. Got a lot of this discussion, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's move on for now, Shane. Are we gonna be here five hours?
Yeah.
Which.
Alright, street cover replacement angle road, that's fifty thousand. That's participation from Lynn County.
Lynn County pushing that one still?
They, they said they're moving forward with the design, but I told them when he first acquired, I said, it's not a high priority for city, but.
Didn't they say that last year too though?
Last couple. It's been on there for a couple of years. They, they, they didn't do anything last year on it. We've had it on the list since they put it out there. But then this, uh, this last fall, he sent something out and said, you know, we're interested in doing this in the city. And I said, what are the costs? Cause I know the last time we checked, they were estimating like a hundred and fifty. He came back and he said a hundred to fifty percent city participation, so we have fifty thousand on there. So. Um, then we get into some park projects, the men and women's restrooms at Heartland Heights and Bray Creek Parks. Uh, pavilion in Heartland Heights Park. The amphitheater and the Seaport and Athletics Complex.
Joe, not to put you on the spot, but at the end prioritize those one through four.
I already did prioritize this. I prioritized it when I, when I presented them. It's the bathrooms, the pavilion, the, uh,
Amphitheater.
Amphitheater and then the, uh, pickleball court.
I'm surprised pickleball is not up a lot higher.
The reason pickleball's not up a lot higher is because we currently have pickleball facilities. So we have two courts that we can use.
Yeah.
The, uh, pickleball net, the, the new one is part of the, uh, development of everything to the west of the complex now. So that was just part of it.
And that is listed on the two to five year.
And that's listed on the two to five year. Yeah. So the, uh, the bathrooms are the number one priority with the pavilion. It's one A and one B. And then the amphitheater.
Keep going Shane, and then we can circle back if they can say, dear Nick.
The library, uh, expansion we left down there was talked about earlier. I think we have, we sent these proposed twenty five thousand budgeted from last. Um, existing sanitary sewer point repairs, sewer line, we talked about that, ongoing maintenance, um, for the existing sewer, the original part of the city. And there may be some up there in, uh, the newer part of those.
Yeah, I have a video of that, yeah.
Oh, we haven't done any, okay.
No.
It's all.
Yeah, it's all old town.
So then the next three are Heartland Heights participation items. So the first one, Heartland Heights, um, the pedestrian bridge over the pond. Uh, once kind of pushed that up to this year is just getting access to that since the developer wants the city to, uh, accept that this summer. Um, that number includes five percent. So basically these numbers were updated a little bit from last week, because after the meeting last week, um, Schrader provided their numbers for twenty twenty four. And then I include five percent contingency on the numbers they gave us. And then, uh, Heartland Heights participation on the trail from the park. That's a hundred and ninety one thousand, same thing, five percent contingency included on that. If, you know, so you didn't wanna do all of it, could just give, um, Heartland Street and cross the pedestrian bridge and cross that east west creek. That number could, I think you could bump down to around a hundred and twenty four thousand if you're taking. And then the last one is the, the box culvert underneath the creek or underneath the trail, I'm sorry, on the east west creek. And the developer requested some participation from the city on that. And last week, uh, so that other sheets, the backside of that, last week, Tommy discussed numbers, right, Doug? So two sheets there, one sheet is basically the developer's costs, savings, um, and the second sheet is the city's cost savings. There's two, there's regular plan, plan and, and then there was a revised plan. So and obviously there's other costs savings involved in the changes of the plan. These are specific city participation items. Um, so on the, uh, the developer sheet, the first one, there's the trail along the east side of the wet pond, that trail went away completely. Based on the original, um, plan agreement, it was fifty percent developers, fifty percent the city, so. There's, uh, since that project went away, the developer would have about a fifty thousand four hundred dollar savings. There's a widened sidewalk that accesses that trail. On the Heartland Street, that was also a fifty percent eight foot paved, um, sidewalk. So that, um, was now turned into the post for revised plan. That was turned into a full trail and the city took all that responsibility. So the developer saves about eighty seven hundred dollars there. Um, wet pond outlet structure. Originally, the city had no participation. Um, that outlet structure changed and there's a revised, or a pedestrian bridge. The city took on fifty percent of that, so. Since that fan's never designed, um, that outlet structure, I just assumed a double box culvert. I'm assuming that, that street's more beginning and I just assumed the price of six hundred and three thousand dollars because I, I doubled the price of what the developers gave me on the four, their eight foot by four foot box over. And it'd be at least twice that size. It's not more, plus you buy it some wind walls and other things, so. That cost is probably around, based on developers' numbers, six hundred and three thousand that they would have had, so you had no participation. And change the pedestrian bridge, which is five hundred eighty nine thousand, six hundred dollars. And the city's can't, percent of the developers, we're gonna spend about two ninety five, so they'd have savings of around three hundred and eight thousand. That changed. And then. And then with the original plumbing plat, they had to pipe that creek. Through the development and there's sort of an oversized storm sewer, which went away, now with the revised plumbing plat, it's just the two box culverts. So that oversized storm sewer was estimated around four hundred and eighty thousand. The two box culverts are estimated around six hundred and fifteen thousand. So that's an additional cost for the developers of around a hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. You add all those up, that's a total savings with the developer of about two hundred and thirty one thousand dollars. And the second sheet is the city's breakdown on those. So the city has savings for that trail on the east side went away, fifty percent, so the city would save about fifty thousand, four hundred dollars. The widened sidewalk went away and became a trail, so the city adds costs, so there's an additional cost of about thirteen thousand two hundred. Wet outlet pond structure, that was, uh. City had no cost originally, and then fifty percent participation, and the pedestrian bridge sold on the cost of two hundred and ninety five thousand. And then if the city participated in the culvert at fifty percent, that'd be about a hundred and fifty four thousand, so. If the city participated, the city would have additional costs in those changes of about four hundred eleven thousand, three hundred dollars. If they don't participate in cross culvert, the city would have still additional costs of two hundred and fifty eight thousand. So even if I assume the numbers for the developer higher low. You know, they're break even instead of a saving of two hundred and thirty thousand, the city still. But that loss of. Two hundred and fifty seven thousand, going to participate.
And what are we, what's the city required to do?
Nothing, absolutely nothing. It's just a request from the developer. I mean, they can express the city, don't pay for anything, but typically cities, like the city help. Pay for this, well, the city paid for the sewer, sewer water to get up there, so they develop, because there wasn't sewer water there, so it kind of helps, you know. Concentrate the developer to develop and, you know, promote growth in the community. Um, there's some participation with the trail. Well, the city wants to fail in there, and it benefits developers too, people that tend by lots, back to parks, trails, something like that. So there's fifty percent participation in the trail on Dudley Road, there's fifty percent on the east side of the pond that went away, and then. Originally, in the original plumbing plat, there were actually two trails, the east side and the west side of that wet pond. At that time, this council wanted to see goals, so they, the city said that they would take the full responsibility for the trail on the west side. But none of that changed with the revised plumbing plat, so the city's still up all that cost. Plus the additional cost of that connection and pedestrian bridge. So again, these are some assumed numbers, but I think it kind of shows the picture on what. Cost the city's already committed to the developer with the revised plumbing plat. And the type of costs, and the savings the developers are seeing, but we're not tied into having, to have costs on the pedestrian bridge.
You are, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we are. The pedestrian bridge, we are, they're asking first to participate in the box culvert?
No, the one sixty one, at the very bottom is what.
Yeah, they're asking us to participate in it, right?
Yes. So I would say that as a no. And then on the, the walk, the trail on the west side, Shane saying we need to take it as far as the, over the pedestrian bridge and probably up to where the creek is.
Just pass that.
And then we wouldn't necessarily have to bring it all the way up at this time. So instead of one ninety one, we could probably do it for like one twenty four, he said. We just wouldn't have it completely done on the west side.
Now, that's, if that's, if that's the case, the developers may not come back and extend it in the future. If the city had already accepted it, then the city's either gonna have to pave the rest of that trail themselves, or, you know, hire a contractor to come to do it, which isn't gonna be a lot different cost.
There's nothing up there anyway, right?
No, there's not.
And they're developing north, not west, and how long, how far down the road is west gonna happen?
The, the big thing from the.
Well, you just need west, whatever this make it, getting make it through the pond, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, if the city's gonna accept the lot, and the city doesn't have access to the lot. That's, that's, in my mind, that's what moves this up and makes it priority, and that's why I put it on the, in the one year CIP. Again, you don't have to do it, but then you have to deal with it in, in the staff, and are they gonna maintain and access it?
Yeah, or the river. You mean, if, if you develop an access road on the north side of the pond?
There is an access, the, the, the owners slash developers, that farm, or if you say farm, the area that's not developed. Have an access across the creek, you know, to this pond. But it's not a permitted access, it's a private access.
Like a field access.
So now is that becoming, the city's access, does it become public access, there's liability issues, the price should be permitted if the city's gonna use it?
And why would the city need to use it?
Well, if you don't do this bridge, and you don't do a trail, the city doesn't have access to the west side of the slot, which the developers want the city to accept this year.
So you can't maintain it? I guess I don't see the development west of the pond though, maybe right now, some, sometimes.
Well, the development west of the pond isn't, isn't happening now, but there is land on the west side of the pond that will be.
Yes.
Unless the council says no, we're not gonna accept it.
So do you mow, do you not mow it, do you let it go? You, you plant a bird grass over there, you've seen that this spring?
If somebody gets hurt over there, how does the city get access if I have them up?
Do we really, I'm about to try, trying to play devil's advocate on both sides here, but. What's gonna be developed on, how soon is the west side gonna be developed? It's gonna be barbed, right, realistically?
But if somebody is over there, they need medical assistance, or someone says.
In the west side, yeah?
Yeah, they're gonna cross the creek, whatever, you know.
It'll be developed that, once that starts to come into play, yeah, but that doesn't stop people.
No, so there's, or there's bonded land on the west side of the pond that's gonna be dedicated to the city this year. It's not gonna be developed, it's always gonna be part of there.
So you have property you can't have access to, so it's a liability thing.
So it's like the west side of the pond area, if you do the pedestrian bridge and then you take the road up to the creek. If somebody wanders around up there, then how do they mow it, how do they get up there, what do they, do we just let that stuff go wide, you know, that's.
They have that track side by side.
What do you do? We take the fire department's little go getter over there and.
It seems silly that you're gonna spend a trail in case someone goes wanders off on that side, or it's, it's just, you're letting it grow. For now, I mean, down the road is gonna be.
It would make more sense to just get a temporary easement on this field access permit. To, to use that field access to get over there to do whatever you would need to do, but.
Well, the north access is a. Quite legal legit, it's not legal legit, so, uh, I don't think it shouldn't, I think it should be taken out of the city except the property.
Well, yeah, the city should not, unless it is permitted through the DNR. And yet there's a agreement between the developers and the city to have access on it.
We don't want them saying, hey, the city has, uh, some gate, why isn't it?
You just put a gate up for some dollars or something, something that can't, right?
Something that stops people, yeah.
You've already cut one side by side you drew there.
Plus, I mean, you just would, you'd have to do like you do on the bridge, you just have to gate it or something, so you can get through it with a key or lock or something, but.
Well, the developers need to get, the city department, they need to get through with the.
I don't know. We just have, we're spending more money than we have.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at, is what I'm, I was just gonna say, three point eight on that CIP. Maybe we're, we're getting, we're getting trim, which is off about fifteen mil over the next five years, and take picture. I mean, is the west side of that pond gonna happen at some point? Yeah, I hope it does, but. We're done. Well, we took two ninety off for the stall in the world. And I asked Joe about his party listing, reiterated them to me. When we first put up Heartland Heights Park, I think the cost was five hundred something, I know there was a pushback on that, but I know. Myself, and I think a few other people committed to adding to it over time. So if you're asking me with his. Priorities on there, I would probably put. At Heartland Heights, a bathroom in the pavilion, which would be roughly a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And then I would cut the bathroom at Berry Creek and the amphitheater. But it continues to develop the Heartland Heights Park, which we all talked about doing over the course of several years. Now, to answer the question, I wonder how to heat a trail on the west side. I know Dan was just saying that there was demand for it, but, you know.
It's still a bed and trail, I agree, it's, it's not.
Yeah, for sure, a hundred percent.
Because otherwise you're talking about one hundred percent box, so we're still coming back around, we went back up to Heartland Street and so on. And what do you want?
Part of the problem is the expectation was gonna be a circular trail, which can't be done, but I'm looking at Iowa Lot Site, and they still have that dug, so that's interesting. Yeah, right above it, by the way, the picture of the revised one, so contradicts.
What does the city need to mow and maintain that there?
Most of it, I think, the original plan for what Bernie. Thought was to mow it about ten to twenty feet each side of the trail all the way up, but everything else came to go with a pretty wildflower and so forth. So with the pretty wildflower, so, you should probably mow it maybe twice a year. You'll maintain it that way, middle hole, for that part, which would be the steam mowers, brush mower. Tractor, that type of thing, rough home, not the, who's their own turn, right now, the way. What he does right now is pretty rough out there, because the terrain would be greased season and so forth. They weren't near the smokes, I think you could do with a zero turn, the george and the stuff out there, but. But for the wildflower stuff, if you want to hide your grows, you let that stuff, like a little ditch of ground, so.
Why maintain it at all? If my dad was a sad kid here.
If you don't, um, the woods, the trees, already you go out there right now, we, while we just mow the park here. This last fall, but all that's gonna take over, it's gonna overshadow, grow, everything else. Um, you're right, all that's gonna take over.
One, the other question I had particular to that is, if, if fail doesn't go in, the developers are gonna argue, well, I don't need to put in that box culvert. Then my question is, council, do you want to accept it without, without project complete, without plans completed? And then just say, you don't have to put that box culvert, you have to pay for it, we don't want to pay for it to participate, you have to pay for it to put it in. But you don't have to do it until we do the trail, or you have to do it now, or we're still not doing the trail, what kind of direction are you gonna? Are you gonna accept that lot without the improvements completed, and then just hope that they come back and deal with it?
I think it's not that the trail's not gonna be done, it's not at this, we move it tight. They'll probably come back and say, we don't want the box culvert, so we'll do the full trail.
The other thing, you have to remember, we, we already have two, so don't, take care of two that's gonna get us in the water. Got that also, keep that for like. It's funny for the wildflower stuff.
What do you got? I mean, I know we can, we can do all of it, but. But yeah, that's, that's my whole thought, if they can fit, that's fantastic, but. What do you trim, what do you, what do you not do, what do you do?
So that is, I'm just to run through the, the two to five here, so, I mean, you're seeing all the pictures. So then those first, um, three items, roll continuation, you know, the bridge project and the. The intersection realignment, and Church Street, there's additional costs to that, it must proceed this year with it. Um, Stallman Road, Dingleview Drive, have additional costs, you know, have to rebond it again next year, the newish most projects if we possibly want to do it. The sewer point, you know, sewer sanitary sewer point repairs and mining projects, I would recommend that, you know. Once you start that process, try to stay on top, do whatever you're, do so much every year, that amount can vary based on needs and stuff. But it's obviously not a single project where you can just stop middle, you can't take a year off, want it, but. Wouldn't recommend that.
We did that with a lot of, you think we said that here, did we?
Yeah, I don't remember. And then we, so, and we handed it, that kind of hurt us, so we. And then there's a couple, uh, you know, some more Heartland Heights participations, park sightings on there. And then on the bottom, there's a couple of big ones in Iowa Lot with the sewer and water extensions, if they want to develop, we're putting anything on this year, because. They've been talking conversion for the last eighteen months, but have never done anything, so we didn't put anything on the CIP for this year. But there could be, some of that could be that they do it with the sewer and water, and then, you know, the city may participate and. You know, provide tip funding to help incentivize that. Improvements seventy six, that would be one of those things, you know, council's gonna have to consider how they want to do that. There may be some rice grains available for that, help pay for that, but again, we have that showing a year or two out, that's kind of just being driven by. There's a few different ways to tackle that. Tom asked questions about some of the improvements, and, you know, after we pass CIP, we'll provide a. A report that shows some of that information, you know. Different proposals with improvements that would be needed up there and some options to help you.
I'd like to make a suggestion to council and Cynthia to see if this would work, because obviously needs. Our complete attention. Are there any, a couple of things that we can just automatically tonight say, cut, 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 Cynthia goes back and rebuilds. Some information, and I would suggest we have a, a special city council meeting just on CIP. And the funding options. Like, I think the thing that we have to kind of wrap our heads around is how much money can we afford to spend per year? For the extended amount of time, because we can't spend ourselves, like, if we spend all of our money on these projects. And then they come out at convergence and say, oh, we're ready to start now, you need to come up with money for this, and we're bonded. I think our, the thing is, we've always made an effort to make sure we are not bonded up to the gills, and I just feel like we're gonna be there with all this.
I agree, and that's what I'm saying, I think we need to, as a separate topic, go through this after we can do a couple of updates here possibly.
And you want to pull up the geo debt limit info?
Yeah, that's what's on the screen. Yeah.
Right, here, you've got your password.
So what I've got noted is, and tell me if I'm wrong, Shane or council, that, uh, three hundred and sixteen thousand that we need in additional for the. Well, that would be revenue debt, right? VSRF.
Yeah.
That wouldn't be geo. Um, and then I had a no written by the stallment, so that's a negative two ninety. And then I had a no on the hundred and sixty one for the box culvert. And then, uh, if you take out one of the bathrooms and the amphitheater. I think that's maybe removing. And the no is the seven hundred and sixteen thousand, the one sixty one, the two ninety, a hundred and fifteen, and one fifty. So that takes that thirty eight, twenty three down to thirty one oh seven, and then you'd have to take the three hundred and sixteen thousand off, because that would not be geo, that would be revenue. So then you're down under three. Maybe two point nine. Um, and then you would decide whether the parks bond money on hand. Plus the grant that we're gonna get, the hundred and eighty seven, if that would go towards the thing to hold out of need debt, or go towards their, those projects. And then. See how much money I can dig up with other bond purposes that have been spent, and we're pretty good at that. I'm pretty good at that, right guys?
Because you're, your trail on the subway trail, you left a trail there, but what else is gonna be used for?
Right, yeah, that's.
That's what I do, I'll hit the box for.
But that's already coming out of this thirty eight total, right? Because it's in there, it's a negative.
Wasn't there something with Maggie's beer that you had, where what comes off? How much debt comes off?
Yeah, we pay it, oh, it's in that, um. Different port that's in the packet, yeah, if you go, um. To the, uh, debt limit pages towards back, uh, we typically, we pay a million dollars off. My year in geo debt. And so, um, I've updated, um, in her tip report, she showed. Uh, debt limit for fiscal twenty five was seventeen, but she assumes two point five percent growth. Uh, remember we had twenty two percent, we actually had over twenty four percent in hundred percent valuation, which is what the geo debt limit is set at. So our actual is, uh, four hundred and twenty four million, um, giving you a geo debt limit twenty one. Um, the current debt on fiscal twenty five would be seven, third, um, thirty thousand. And then if you take the contingency that you want to reserve, which would be four point two, would give you, um. Uh, geo debt capacity less the contingency reserve of not, almost ten million.
So my understanding is if we're, we're at three, three, so we subtract the. Stallman Road, that's minus two ninety. Now, I, I took one fifteen off of the amphitheater. I kept the fifty for the pavilion and I, I only put one thirty for the bathroom, so I took one sixty out of that two ninety five.
Instead of the one fifty.
Because of the, the construction cost roughly of one bathroom. I mean, and that's something you'd want to trade it. So I subtracted one fifteen, one thirty, two ninety. One sixty one for the box culvert, and if we're not doing the box cover, then are we participating in the trail? No. I don't, do we have to do the bridge?
Well, if you, if you do the bridge and you do the trail, I mean, if they're done, you have to participate. It's whether or not you're gonna do them. Based on the development agreement.
The pedestrian bridge, I believe, were at fifty percent participation or.
The trail is a hundred percent participat- so the developer's responsible for putting it in and then you're responsible for reimbursing them or they're sub basis and maybe.
So anyway, what number were you coming up with then?
I ended up.
And then did you take the three sixteen off that would be, uh, revenue debt?
No. I'm coming in roughly two point eight.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
What's, what's coming off of the?
The three sixteen, if you look on new water supply well, number four and observation well. That would be out of the, that would not be a geo debt, that'd be.
But we also have crashed off the. Culver participation too, but.
We did?
Well.
I suggested.
I do, yeah.
I do.
Year, 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 year after year.
Yeah.
We'll pull the trigger on it at some point here.
It pays, yeah.
When I'm angle road, do they want their.
No, that one. So we're more than bridge and angle come together.
Yeah. There's that little lock button right there, there, there's like the.
Stallman locking in that. One thing.
Right now, it's actually normal.
Okay.
One thing from a county participation. Doesn't mean anything, but if in a year or two, the city does seventy sixth avenue. For the, the industrial park, the south half, that is a county, so hopefully we can go to them and say, hey, we want participation. So if we say, well, we want participation with doing this. It may not impact anything, I don't know.
Yes. We're gonna do it in July, okay? Tell us when you're gonna do it so we can.
They'll do us this year. I mean, if, if the city says we're gonna do it, they, they're working on the plan, they'll put it up a bit here.
Cause we did the other one on seventy six where it curves over here, right? You have like three W collapse and.
That, that's a whole different culvert there. By angle road, you know, culvert now, they're the. Basically passer levels back to.
But other than future cooperation on projects, what would that ankle road culvert do for us today?
Nothing, I mean, it's just, it's just that it's, it really ain't gonna help much for any G or equal. Like Shane, what you said earlier, seventy six.
Well, and in the big perspective, what's fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand will create.
Gonna do to your payment on a two point eight million.
Like we're taking out these little. Piddly things and that's not the problem.
Hey, we've taken a million off, taken off piddly things.
Just like for you still, we're gonna get to a point where we're gonna be bonded so much this year that are you gonna have money to bond? To pay for the rest of it next year or the year after that?
Two point eight, that gets us down to whatever, uh, happened. Two point eight takes the seven point one, but then you pay roughly a million off, so that takes us back to eight balls off.
Yeah.
Eight, but we're just down, you know.
And I didn't.
And you'll have.
What next year's numbers will be for.
That's what I'm saying.
There'll be girls, but also like the two to five year, I know that's a big number, that thirty five, but fourteen million of that is S R F. That's the answer, it's not really a lot.
So Cynthia, what would you suggest at this point to move forward? Well.
I don't, to be honest, I don't know if we need to have a special on C I P council. I think we can have a rough number for bonding for one year. For one year. I don't know, I mean, these numbers vary so wildly, like in the two to five, I mean, yeah, we can take off the stallman road, that's eight oh five, we can take off the. Brandon railroad crossing from the Fairfax trail to the industrial park, you know, that's just piddly two seventeen. But this other stuff, I don't know if we need to not take it off and just leave it because it's two to five years out, you know. Seventy six avenue, we're talking about that, how fast is converging and energon and transformers and all that. I developed, it's maybe that might be a higher priority in a couple of years if they really like what they're doing out there, uh, a line. Uh, who knows what the final number's gonna be on putting together the. Treatment facility and well born by, I mean, that's roughly, we're hoping it's around there, but we also know. That, uh. Prove it one hand and hope it another and see if it's still.
So I get, what I would suggest, I think is try to shoot for that two point eight, see what we can do. And see what gets mag info from Maggie on the February council meeting yet. Okay.
What you said, buying some, we have some other bonds that.
Right, yeah, so that might take that, yeah, yeah.
That senses, so.
So nervous, Nellie, it's something.
Um, we're picking a number and we're.
Spend all this year and be great next year.
Probably, no, point eight is what we get.
Well, that's what we come up with, with the man. What we can get our hands on.
So if you look at the bottom there where it's, it's a three point eight, for that's if we did everything on there. And so what we've done is where we took off things. That two point eight is where we lock in the projects that we're hard looking to do, so ego view, design, you know. So basically everything on here that we didn't cut off. Now, again, we don't have to spend it if we ultimately decide not to, it's just geo debt. That can be spent at a later date for a specified reason that falls within line of that geo debt.
Or any other lawful purpose, law.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. No, a bond purpose never says any, yes, the lawful purpose, never. No.
So just to throw this wrench in there too, and I know we don't have any information to talk about it and. Shane giving that head up, but. I personally think, and what people spoke to, it's time to talk about the intersection of. So if you've ever dreamed of turning left at four o'clock. I don't know what that entail, I don't want anyone here announced.
It is tell the track, like.
Well, we can't do anything about that, that's all the D O T. That's their intersection. So we can tell them that we want to do something there, but. The reality is unless there's a lot of fatalities, they don't really want to do anything.
There's actually, the, this, the O P did a report a little over a year ago, like the key report on it. I, I haven't had a chance to look at it since they sent it. Too much, but there's reference to intersection improvements, of course. There's safety funds, but if that was the case, we'd have to go around about a better section, so.
And I might lose my mind, but it's late, I'm gonna, my brain's functioning at twenty five percent, so I'm gonna.
Percent cost for the city coming from the state. I, I would, yes, I would have to.
I think we discussed a long time ago about roundup, it's not feasible without the intersection with this.
But you have to acquire a lot of property.
Yeah, you have to acquire property and then die. And we also looked at, you know, before there was any talking safety funding, but actually the highway and the intersection along the highway, there's sort of pretty good safety funding. Even though they have many fatalities, but, um, this is all just one of those, I recall. The, uh, we talked originally. So the city will look at M P O funds for eighty street improvements, rural section, rural section, possible trail, we just up through there. Probably development agreements with the developer for our I S S that we put in, don't pass life, we'll pop. And we're gonna start looking at projects for the next five year process for the M P O and obviously that would be on there and that intersection can be on there as well, but. If that's the case, then those funds won't become available until after twenty thirty. But obviously we know the next three, four year, you're pretty. Pretty busy for the city of Fairfax anyway, projects, but. So there's possible funding for the road, Brady Street and that intersection through the M P O, Austin or safety funded at the intersection, so there's a lot there to discuss.
I do agree, something needs to be done there, my thing is track it light, and we also talked about, uh, again, this is long term C I P, so we already talked about it, but. Expanding eighty street north of one fifty one to include. Property or right or straight slash left, but yeah. When you do it, do you convince the state finally to go? Do something, let's not roundabout related.
Sounds like there's more money available, Shane, if you do the roundabout.
Well, I think, I think, and I don't, like you said, I don't, I know there's reference to. Safety money, but I don't know if you feel that it's also intelligent.
And I don't know what the schedule is, if you get, you know, the D O, um, D O T on board. How many years out there funding availability would be, it's. It's a lot.
Oh, industrial park. That starts to go, which I don't know what is, you have the water tower. Realignment over here. A big project here is big, huge leaks. I agree, I, I have to cross this at least twice a day, it sucks. I don't, I don't like it.
It just sucks because we don't have any control over what happens there, so let's.
I, I think the city, obviously can work with the D O T on that, if, you know, the city would have to initiate that. But at some point, you know, the timing of that and. If, if somebody were to die there, obviously that's gonna increase, you know, the D O T's attention at that intersection, we don't want that, but. Overall, so possibly to get in safety phones, but. But it's something that. We have to give projects in the M P O by mid March, so February meeting, we thought about some of these guys, what can I do like there? Just we have some directions to throw. Something to get the Smith and you'll have some of that, knowing what the M P O can consider. All that stuff.
I guess it hurt that we need to have them in March by February, maybe just throw something, say, hey, wanna put a. Controlled intersection up. What was that?
Roundabout number out there, so you can, years ago, for, you had like three hundred thousand.
For what? Sorry?
This was in someone that went counting, oh, it was, uh. Funny for Co- COVID, what was all?
That's all gone over to the water, that's.
Well, I'm just saying something like that. But you, we have to vote for another pandemic to get heart over.
Okay.
So Cynthia, do you have enough direction with what we just?
Just don't anybody bother me between now and February thirteen. The auditors are in the house, yes, they are. Okay, so that'll take us to mayor's comment. I have none other than. Let's move on, first comment. I was just gonna let you know that the auditors were here. They'll be here today, tomorrow and next Tuesday and next day.
Still the state albers?
Yes.
Same guy from last year.
The main guy, the, uh, assistant is different. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Um, I do have a, you have a comment, I'm gonna be gone. So we moved the March meeting because it fell on the spring break and I am actually gonna be gone the week before that as well. Okay, so you're gonna be down the fifth. Actually, I'm gonna leave the state. I'm still gone the following week, so you can't.
But you're gonna be here the fifth?
He's here the fifth, but he's gone spring break.
You timed all that. Every year?
I had to, I had to, I had to make some changes and that's kind of, that's kind of where it fell, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Second motion, second.
Okay, all in favor? Any names? Mary Ann, did you sign this, Cynthia, we've been for the auditor, the face of our phone, the old tournament. She's got it marked.